It's a great question. Ooh, I have it up at seven.
At six o'clock, I'm going to call this meeting to order. Everyone can please stand and join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So first on the agenda is the approval of tonight's agenda. Do we have anything we'd like to take away or add to tonight's agenda? Okay, hearing none, I will move on to public comment. Is there anyone joining us this evening that would like to make public comment to something that is not on this evening's agenda? If so, now's the time to do so. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Nice to see you again. 435 Edgemere Drive Southeast. Last week, on behalf of the residents of this city, a valid protest petition was filed. It was presented to you by an attorney who specializes in these things. Its purpose was explained by that attorney in the brief time allotted to him. Our city attorney stated he'd been anticipating the petition for several weeks, yet many on the commission were apparently surprised by it. Attorney Huff gave an opinion that the petition was invalid because first, it did not apply to administrative decisions, and second, because it lacked required information. To that end, I share a copy of the state code governing protest petitions. Could you zoom in on this a little bit if you don't mind? Thank you. You'll see, "An amendment to a zoning ordinance by a city or village is subject to a protest petition." That's pretty clear. You voted on an ordinance amendment. The state code makes no mention of administrative versus legislative. Next, if a protest petition is filed, approval of the amendment to the zoning ordinance shall require a two-thirds vote of the legislative body. The vote taken last week did not reach that threshold. Finally, the only required element of the petition is signatures. No surveys or proof of ownership are mentioned. This city is already in possession of those items. You were given a valid protest petition, and your vote did not pass. Last week, last night, sorry, I watched in fascination a replay of the last 15 minutes of that commission meeting. In it, I saw our mayor seeking the opinion of the attorney for the developer, but not allowing input from the attorney who drafted the petition. This continues the clear bias the city staff has shown for advancing the interest of the developer over its residents. I asked commissioners, I saw commissioners ask what's legally required to reject a petition with no answer given. I heard it said that by voting on the concept plan, it implied an informal decision that the commission would not take the protest petition into account. Perhaps you informally decided not to abide by state law. The meeting was alarmingly dysfunctional to all that witnessed it. This is no way to treat a decision whose impact may affect this city for 100 years, and I implore you, as you now reconsider this development, to be transparent, thorough, and to listen to those you represent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Was there anyone else that would care to make public comment at this time to something that's not on the agenda? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Mark Armstead. My address is 2202 Elmwood. Again, I'm just coming up here for general concerns. Some are just, when you talk to other people, they have concerns. It's, for me anyways, it's very nervous, I'm very nervous being up here talking. But anyways, just moving forward, you know, I've been to a couple of meetings. I never really have been to meetings before, just because of some of the things I was hearing about happening in the city. But anyways, you know, we've had a lot of people make comment on a lot of things, and you know, some of those comments, I think, provided some valuable insight. You know, one of the things that I took away from one of the meetings was, you know, people want to see something developed, you know, in that spot. They're just tired of looking at it the way it is. And, you know, so I think that's pretty common ground for a lot of people. And then there's a lot of controversy about what should go in there. And we keep hearing, you know, it should be something for the community, benefit the community. But then, you know, that seems to be very discretionary. I'm not sure, you know, what, how, I'm not sure how to close that gap, but some of the things that I've observed or noticed is, you know, it's, it seems like there's some things that are happening without good communication back to the community. And/or it's hard. For myself, I'm not good with technology, so if you give me a three-ring binder with all the information in it, I don't care if it's that thick, I'll look through it. That would be really helpful for me, maybe for some other people, too. That's just me. Anyways, one of the things is, you know, and I brought this up before, you know, I think things like millages for parks, roads, and schools, that should be non-discretionary spending, and it's put forth as discretionary spending, the way it's presented. You know, there's other things that the city's spending money on that are discretionary, that just pass through without any input from the community. I think that's a little disingenuous, you know, when that's happening. I don't feel that roads, parks, and schools should be treated as such. So, you know, my ask tonight is that everybody take a deep breath, and we recommit to the community. You know, I think that would be very helpful, there's a recommitment. And, you know, the other thing that's a little bit, I just ran across this recently, apparently we're a redevelopment-ready community. And that 10-minute overview, I kind of got a synopsis of what that is, and it explains some of the things that have been going on. But, you know, I don't know if the community is really aware of all these things that are happening and why some of these things are happening. So again, that recommitment, back to the community, you know, communication, and, you know, and just, it's the surprise, I think, that gets everybody up in angst. So, I appreciate it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armstead. Thank you. Would anyone else care to make public comment? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Craig Nolan, and I'm at 455 Edgemere. It's my first and maybe my last time I'll be speaking with you. It's not, I want to speak in terms of this issue of whether the decision this body rendered is administrative or legislative. And I'm an attorney, but I don't represent anybody in this case, and I don't plan to. In fact, in my day job, I'm often sitting with Mr. Huff sitting, and I have recognized over many, many years of working with municipalities, how much is invested in such an important decision, right from the beginning throughout. And the city manager, the zoning officials, your staff, we have no idea how much work has been done, and that's appreciated and understood and respected. And I know everybody has the best interest of the community at heart. But I was somewhat puzzled and maybe a little concerned by the minutes from the last meeting and the notion that the legislative decision made by this commission, the amendment of that zoning ordinance, was simply an administrative decision. I think this body is probably aware that there are two ways to amend the PUD, minor changes, major changes, that's in the ordinance. That is a distinction recognized in the case law, and it's been applied historically by the Michigan cases. This is not a minor amendment. A minor amendment would simply require an application to the Department of Public Works and then potentially go to the Planning Commission. This has never been recognized as anything but a very, very major development. And in fact, each of the agenda items, background announcements to this community has recognized that this is a major change to the previously approved PUD. The ordinance, the city zoning ordinance, is very specific and very repetitive in recognizing that the change to the PUD is a quote-unquote rezoning process. By coincidence, I happen to represent a township in Kent County about 10, 12 years ago where we had made an administrative amendment to a PUD, and it was challenged by a property owner. I lost that case, and the reason I lost that case is it went up to the Court of Appeals, and the Court of Appeals looked at the ordinance. The ordinance was functionally the same as this city's ordinance. It distinguished major and minor changes, and it recognized that if it's truly minor, it's administrative. And my time is up, but thank you for listening very much.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan. Would anyone else care to make public comment this evening to something that's not on this Hello, Mr. Decker.
Hello, everybody. Seven o'clock tonight is kickoff.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
David Decker, 925 Belleclaire, and seven o'clock tonight is kickoff. I hope you're all there. The Lions I'm talking about, obviously. So, my public comment, I'd like to start by saying something that you've all heard before from me and from many others that come up here for public comment, and it deserves to be said again. Thank you. Thank you for your willingness to volunteer, to serve the community. Those of you who are being paid to be here are also serving the community, and thank you to you as well. Over the last 10 days, there's another group of volunteers that have been hearing "Thank you for doing this" very frequently. Many residents have been circulating petitions, first the notice petitions, and now the referendum petitions. The referendum petition is a petition to allow a referendum so that East Grand Rapids residents can vote on the concept plan that the city commission voted on last week, or two weeks ago. The most frequent comment that those volunteers hear, both from East Grand Rapids residents who signed the petition and folks that are visiting from other communities that cannot sign the petition, of course, is "Thank you for doing this," again and again, and it's very heartfelt. And I think that people, when they come up here for public comment, what they're saying to you folks is also very heartfelt. "Thank you," because it's not easy, what you do to serve this community. The opportunity to vote on major issues that affect our community, you folks get an opportunity to do that, and that's what people are saying to the volunteers who are circulating the referendum petition is, "Thank you. We really appreciate the opportunity to vote on this." They're not saying how they're going to vote, and that's something that we in this country and in this state and this city, unlike so many people throughout the world, don't have the opportunity. We don't have the opportunity to, they don't have the opportunity to vote. And I'm confident that we will have the opportunity here in this city on this issue to have that vote, and I appreciate the work that all of you do and have done. We don't always agree on policy and perhaps on procedures, but I think we all agree that there's thanks that are deserved for those who work very hard to serve this community. For all of you that are here listening or listening on YouTube, please look for volunteers with petitions, both in front of this building and in front of Gaslight Village near Starbucks and DMW throughout the next couple of weeks. If you'd like to help, please ask any of the volunteers you see, and we can get you set up with a clipboard, a set of instructions, and a few petitions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Anyone else care to make public comment?
Hi.
Hello, Ms. Denton.
My name is Erica Denton. I live at 2100 Gorham Drive Southeast. One of the things that's been most striking to me throughout this process is both the amount of time that every single person in this room has given towards this process. It's extensive, it's a lot. We understand, everybody has families, everybody's got a job and a purpose, and we're grateful for that. So I want to echo that. Something I've heard recently that has me feeling a bit concerned, beyond what we've discussed in these rooms, is also the perception that's being held amongst neighboring communities. I think we should lead by example across the board in our interactions, whether it be here, online, or interpersonally. It's also an expectation that we are leading by example. This process has been confusing for many residents. Questions, as you've heard, are still coming out. I think that's an indicator that more information may be needed. It's not a definitive statement, it's just, it's a general perception. When you go and talk to other communities, so I've gone and talked to various people in Ada, for example, to ask, "How did this come about? How did this come to fruition?" And a lot of it was going to the people of the community, going to people of all ages, going to the schools, going to local businesses, going to all different types of organizations and getting feedback. And I think that's a really important aspect. That's how we get buy-in, that's how we get, we all come to the same page, and we get there together, and it doesn't feel so confrontational. I know for myself, I am not, I don't love public speaking. I do think it's important for our voices to be heard. I think everybody's voice should be heard, and I think it's important to hear that feedback and take it into account, and we build from there. While I realize this is a private property, it is in the center, in the heart of our community. Several of you, along with several of the residents, have mentioned how important it is to our families. Families are the center of this community, have always been, and I think it's very, very important to uphold that. This is a better place to live because of that. We work together, we don't work against each other, and I think we want to really honor that spirit. So as we do go through this process, whichever direction we do decide to go, I just ask that we think about that. We think about all of the families, old, young, new, multi-generational. We all have an investment to be here, and we want to be respected, but we want to respect each other as well. So I want to thank everybody, from the staff to our city commissioners, and just ask that we think about how this has been done and done very well. Thank you.
Did anyone else care to make any comment, public comment, about something not on this Okay, hearing none. I will close public comment and move on to the rest of our agenda. Next, we have the report of the mayor and city commissioners, including committee liaison reports.
I'm stretching my lines, sorry.
Almost, almost. Mr. Skaggs, did you have anything you wanted to add tonight? Sorry, I know you're writing.
No, I was ordering the things that I wanted to say. First, I just wanted to congratulate the organizers of the Harvest and Beer Festival. It was a wonderful event. I don't know what they did to hold the weather off, but they did it, and it was great to see so many people out and about downtown and taking advantage of Gaslight Village. Also wanted to pass along my thanks to the city manager and the mayor for adding this scooter conversation to the agenda tonight. I'm looking forward to it. I won't say anymore until we get there, but wanted to say thank you. And just wanted to make sure that the community is aware that this is an election year for the city, and absentee ballots are available if you come in and see the city clerk from now until Election Day. No early voting this year, though. That's only in even years. So you can still vote early via absentee ballot, though, if you would like.
Perfect. Thank you. Mr. Burdick?
I have nothing to add to that. Those were great. I agree, Harvest Fest was great, and yes, I echo everything Commissioner Skaggs had to say.
Perfect. Mr. Wesley?
Nothing for me tonight, thank you.
All right. Mr. Hunter?
Yeah, a couple of things. Just wanted to draw everybody's attention to tomorrow evening at Cedar Springs High School, a little bit of a drive, but first round of regional soccer is happening after a district, hard-fought district championship for our boys' soccer team. Really hard district to get out of, and we did so and hopefully continue throughout the rest of the tournament. Kate covered the Harvest Fest, which was a great time. The last home football game is this Friday, so obviously this is Spirit Week and Hearts of Gold Week. So as an uncle of a person, a child who's received conductive education, I just want to put out the Conductive Learning Center to the community and say that for children suffering from cerebral palsy, spinal bifida, and other non-progressive motor disorders, this is a great institution to come out and support this week. So buy the, you know, donuts and cider from the kids across the street from you, whoever has a stand or whoever's selling stuff door-to-door, let's support that organization. So, and as well, because it's the last home football game, the marching band will have Parents Night. And just, if we could do, you know, as much as we can to support the performing arts here in this city. We have a great marching band with a new leader, Mr. Barnhart, this second full year. Please come out and support that in front of the Gaslight Village area. Finally, a little long-winded today, but last meeting, we had a 12th grader from the high school come here and provide public comment. I met him when I was chaperoning the senior overnight a couple of weeks ago, and Calder gave a really impassioned speech to his senior class that night, or they have kind of an open-mic night type opportunity. He just grabbed the mic, gave this rousing speech to his class, and just, it drew great applause from the rest of the class. I then got in a conversation with him about what he wanted to get into after high school. He said city planning, so I said, "You got to come out and provide public comment on how you feel if you have an opinion on the development." And even though we differ a little bit in some of our ideas about the development, I just wanted to draw attention to that young man and other young people that are in our schools, in our community, and we're all doing a lot to help generate these type of educational and social outcomes for our kids that are hugely important. But anyways, Calder, seeing him up here, you know, it was super cool to see him participating in the democratic process.
Absolutely. Great, thank you.
I have nothing to say.
Okay, Mr. Schwartz?
I think everybody hit all my high points. I also just wanted to extend a thank you to our staff, Public Works, for supporting block parties in our town. I had one of those a couple of weeks ago. It's just such a fun way to get everybody together, to build a community that our residents talk about. We had a great time. It closed, our period of doing block parties closed a couple of weeks ago, and in part that's because leaf pickup starts, and so I look forward to that as well. Thank you to staff in advance for all the work that I know goes into that. So excited for the conversations tonight.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo what everyone else has said. Harvest Fest was great, and yeah, exactly, I don't know how they pulled off the weather, but it was perfectly timed. So I hope everyone had a chance to go down there and enjoy. I thought it was a great turnout, and they did just another fantastic job of organizing such a fun event. And then, yes, Commissioner Hunter, about Hearts of Gold, I have, this weekend had the opportunity and this past weeks, of just driving around and seeing how the kiddos are fundraising and what they're selling, and kids of all ages are really getting into this, and it's super creative, and it's just really a great way for the community to come together. So it's, I just love seeing all the creativity and all the way, how, like, I think I bought some ornaments from some four-year-old girls over the weekend, and just all the things on Facebook. So everyone seems to be getting involved and chipping in, and it's just a wonderful thing to see. So, yeah, go ahead and go to the game this Friday, support Hearts of Gold, and show your spirit. That's all I have.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Real quickly, just two things. Again, Harvest Festival, wanna, great event, we will not be sharing our secrets for the weather, that's a, no, I'm teasing. Wanted a special thank you to Parks and Recreation Director Derek Melville, who I think started 6:00 that morning, and his last text to me after wrap-out was about 10:30. So it's part of the reason he is not here this evening due to that. Yeah, yeah, so he'll do that. Then second, I just want to take an extra moment to really congratulate two of our exceptional Public Works employees. As the commission knows, we just have great staff all across the organization. But, two weeks ago, two weeks ago, yep, our two participants in the American Public Works Association Rodeo Midwest Team Competition, we actually, we won. It was the first time since 2012, I think, we took the team event.
Early 2000s.
Early 2000s. So, Joe Maury, Todd Cupp were this year's winners, who were competing against teams from Marquette, all across the state. I think Oakland County had sent a group over and whatnot. So just a large number of participants was at Kent County Road Commission, and they were the top team. Joe actually took the individual title last year, if I remember correctly. So they are off to Nationals next September as part of that. They'll be headed out there. The local APWA branch actually provides funding for that travel and whatnot, but we're excited to send them out there. No, they will not be driving our trucks out there, they fly out there, they provide the vehicles out there. I've gotten that question, I think, two or three times, so, but just really excited for them, and just, again, amazing job by them.
Absolutely. That's great.
And that was all I had.
Perfect, okay. And we can move on to, Charlotte, now you may come up. The regular agenda items. First on the agenda, we have to consider approval of adding the Roth contribution option to the city employee's 457 deferred compensation plan. That introduction is by Finance Director Charlotte Seeth.
Good evening. So we've had a couple people request to add the Roth option as part of our 457, which allows them to make contributions post-tax. So there's different kinds of Roths that you can do. So we already have a Roth IRA, which has limitations, as you can see in the memo, $7,000 and $8,000 for the annual year 2025, where the 457 Roth has higher contribution levels, so you can give up to $23,500, and then there's a bunch of different formulas for over $50,000, and then the catch-up. So we would like to add this. It doesn't cost the city anything, it's all 100% contributions made by the employee, and it's just another option for them to prepare for their future.
Perfect, thank you. Are there any questions from the Seeth, this agenda item? No? Okay, thank you. Okay, could I have a motion in a second on this agenda item?
I move that the commission approve adding the Roth contribution option to the city employer's 457 deferred compensation plan.
Second. Wonderful. Is there any further conversation, commissioners? Okay, are the, all those in favor say yes? Yes? Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have to consider amending the city poverty exemption policy to raise poverty income and asset limits and eliminate the special circumstances, Section 7. Again, introduction by Finance Director Seeth.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we've had a lot of discussion in finance about the poverty exemption, going back to January, what do we want it to look like? We would love to help give above the federal limits, since they're so low. And then discussing in finance, we decided that this was a bigger discussion that should be brought to the full commission. As you can see in the memo, it talks about first, eliminating the section for special circumstances. We've been advised by the state to eliminate that section in our policy, just because it's open for a lot of interpretation, and it's very hard to honor that. So as part of our audit next year, which the state does... that is part of our audit next year, which the state does. We need to have that removed as part of their recommendations. But as far as the poverty limit exemptions, we've done our research throughout the state and about people who do higher than the poverty limits. And as you can see in your memos, there are multiple people that we looked at across the state that do 2% higher, two times or two, yeah, excuse me, two times the limit, the poverty limits. Some people do two and a half. So the Finance Committee originally were set with a 2%. Then we started talking about assets, and what does that look like? Because that also is a factor. You have to meet both. You have to meet the asset test and the poverty test. So we originally started with the two times the limit on that as well, and realized that it was still probably a little low. And then Stacy Hayes, who was our assessor, actually did some research today about the vehicle related to your assets. Most communities do not include your house, of course, because we're trying to keep you in your house. But we did research, and most of the Metro Six exclude the vehicle as well as part of their asset limits. So this is open for discussion, and what you, as you can see, there are different poverty levels provided in the discussion, but this is open for discussion and trying to figure out where you guys want to settle and provide this for our community.
Okay. And what is the expectation out of this discussion?
So this evening, we're seeking direction on, does the commission want to amend it? If so, do you want to, at what levels, do you want to reconsider the income threshold and potentially the asset? We'll take that feedback tonight, update the policy, and have it ready for action at either the next commission meeting or the meeting after. This has to be done by the end of November.
At least have Number 7 removed.
Yep. But the deadline, deadline for that is, yeah.
Yeah, December Board of Review.
So before, which is, what are the dates of that?
Number 8.
Eight, yeah.
So we would have to have this done by the second meeting in November. Again, commission can choose to leave it alone, can direct staff to reset the table to two times. There's a chart in there from other communities where they're at, and then some direction on the asset threshold with that. And that's something, as Ms. Seeth noted, our assessor was able to get some additional information this afternoon. Unfortunately, we weren't ready to get it out to the commission, so you have that, whatnot. I also want to, I believe everybody does know our city assessor, Stacy Hayes, so she's here this evening to answer any questions that you may have in regards to this. So with that.
Thanks for being here tonight, Stacy. About the special circumstances, I just have one question. So with the removal of that, what happens to the applicants whose situation might previously have been considered but no longer meet this threshold? Like, is there any kind of a?
Yeah, there's kind of a.
It's just a thing?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, it would just stop then?
Yes.
There's no grandfather clause?
No.
Okay. Okay.
No.
I was just curious about that.
Yeah. We cannot deviate from the guidelines anymore.
Okay.
According to the state, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. I have a couple other questions. So in your research with this, have you estimated or can you estimate how many additional households would qualify if there was a new income threshold? Or I know this is like been the question. Have you made any headway with that?
We currently have possibly two people that could qualify if we could change it.
Okay.
We don't have anyone qualifying right now.
Mm-hmm.
I.
So just if I may, Madam Mayor, so we did reach out to the other communities throughout the state and said, how many do you generally see? And Ann Arbor, I think, had the most at about 20, and that's obviously a much larger population. Birmingham had two or three. The general sense is that for those communities who have set their poverty levels to a higher level, they're not seeing a wave. They're seeing just a very few applicants proportionally to their stuff. And again, these are all communities whose socioeconomic status is in line with East Grand Rapids.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I have a question about what gets counted as assets and income. I guess my, I want to help people who need help, and then I'm also trying to think of how people could abuse the system, honestly. And so like, how do like trusts work into this? Can, like, if I keep all of my income in trust, I don't, I don't know. Like, how does that factor in? Does it? Or is it strictly like accounts in your personal name?
Um, I mean, we look at what's filed on your income tax return each year. So I don't.
Okay. Let's, yeah.
And again.
I don't know how that gets reported.
I know. I don't know how that gets reported either. So.
Okay.
And as you noted, the first page of the current policy, the list of things that you have to provide to us and certify. Do we require them to certify these are truthful statements? Stacy, yes?
Yes. Yes. Yep. Correct.
Just to piggyback off Commissioner Schwartz's ask there, just came to mind. So I served on the Board of Review years ago, so I'm not remembering this correctly.
Yeah.
So it's a, it's a self-reporting system. Do we ask for tax documents or bank statements as well?
Yes, we do.
Okay. So the actual tax documents and bank statements are submitted?
Yep, they do. We do. Yep.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay.
Just a follow-up question on that. Just, my understanding is that we ask for that tax document that they provide to us. We don't get it directly from the IRS. Is that correct?
No, we don't.
Is there a mechanism that we can get it directly from the IRS? Or is that, like, is that within legal rights to do that? Just, again, if we were kind of following what Commissioner Schwartz was kind of potentially concerned about, which is maybe, not that, we'd like to believe that everyone's trustworthy, but you know, if, you know, what to stop someone from rewriting a 1040 and submitting it and having it completely different than what the IRS has. So I was wondering, and have you seen potential for fraud, too? That's kind of a follow-up question.
I personally have not seen any fraud, but I haven't. I'd have to look into if we could.
I only ask because I used to fill out my kids' FAFSA, and they have like this nifty thing where like, it's like, hey, sign this thing. And then they just went to the IRS and like magically pulled it from the cloud, and it saved me some time, but, which was really helpful. But then also I realized, oh, that's a really a good safety mechanism from just me saying, hey, yeah.
Yeah.
It just takes the guesswork out of everything. So I just, I think that there'd be, if, if they're allowed to do that, and if we are, you know, a government agent, body.
Sure, sure.
So, yeah, that's something we'll research. We don't have an answer to that question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just, I have a real quick one. This is something that's going to need to be applied for every year for the exemption, or?
Correct. Yep.
Go ahead, Commissioner Skaggs.
Yeah. And how are residents made aware that this is available to them?
We do have it on our website, on the assessor's page. If anyone calls and, you know, asks if there's any programs, we mention it, but it's really about it right now.
Okay.
I'd just like to follow up on Commissioner Schwartz's question. You know, I think most trust income is recognized through somebody's personal income tax return.
Okay.
But if there would be other income from like corporation or a trust or any other type of entity that somebody would be receiving income from, could we codify the language to say any entity that you might be an owner in?
Most definitely. Yep.
Okay.
So it does say what count, you know, includes, income includes but is not limited to. It says dividends, interest, net income from estates and trusts and royalties and rentals, gambling, or even lottery winnings.
There you go.
But, and I was also asking about assets, too.
Assets, too.
So I'm just holding everything in a trust.
Yeah.
Not that I, I sound so pessimistic. I'm sorry.
Valid questions. I mean, we're having the discussion. We might as well get some of the fine print and details right while we're, while we're here.
Yeah.
And I know that you had, not to put anybody in finance on the spot, but I know that you had multiple conversations in finance about this. Is there any?
Well, I think, like Ms. Seeth was saying, like, normally we have a recommendation. Like, it always comes up here for discussion and vote, but normally there's a recommendation. And I, my perspective was that we had so much back and forth, and we were like, this is, this is really hard, and I wouldn't even want to make a recommendation. I want everybody to just start with, from the same point. That was my perspective.
Now, go ahead.
So was, I mean, to follow up on that question, though, was there any sort of consensus that seemed to be building? Mostly interested in the asset limit.
I think there's, I mean, everybody's here and can speak for themselves, but I think there was high interest in making this accessible to people who truly need it, while also saying, how far do we go? And looking out for fraud, because we are such a property tax-based budgeting system here. I mean, we're 70, almost 80%, I think, property tax-based with our, you know, how we gain revenue. So we just want to be really careful about taking things away from ourselves while at the same time helping those who are less fortunate and in a hard space, and hopefully temporarily. But just making sure we do it in a responsible way that doesn't make us the next year go, oh, gosh, we overdid it. And you don't want to claw that back. And so, you know, this is one of those, how far do we want to go? And I, my, my personal viewpoint, and I think everybody else is in agreement, like, let's at least double the asset threshold. Like, that is just so low. And taking the car out of a vehicle out of it makes sense. But yeah, it's just, it's such a heavy, very personal policy decision that I really wanted to have this type of a conversation and get everybody's perspective.
So that it is possible to take certain things out of the asset category, like the vehicle?
Correct. Yep.
I will say, too, from being on Board of Review and Finance, because this, I think we're trying to write this to take some of the subjectivity out of it, because it's one of those issues that while you're trying to be as compassionate, like, we want to be compassionate. We want to help our neighbors out when they're struggling. It's really tough to put Board of Review in a spot where they're having to determine the exact sell value of a car. And in, you're right in front of someone that is, no matter what, down on their luck, and even if they don't qualify or they're close, it's not an enviable position for anyone to be in, to be coming in there in the first place.
Right.
So we're trying to make this as clear-cut as possible to not only make it more straightforward for Board of Review, but also more straightforward for people applying, so that there's a clear understanding of what the limits are. So people aren't having to bring themselves in there and put themselves through that just to be denied by what they will determine as something that's coming off as subjective.
That's a great point. Yeah, thank you.
To your request, I knew there was a form. It's Form 8821 with the IRS. It's called a taxpayer authorization form. It authorizes, if the taxpayer signs it, an organization to obtain their confidential tax information. I knew I had read something up about that recently.
Thank you.
So if we ever wanted, of course, there's a fee, like everything with the IRS, but it is available if we feel like we need to get that information.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Great information.
Were there any other questions for either Ms. Seeth or Ms. Hayes?
So a, first, I mentioned in the memo was a sliding scale, but I couldn't quite make out what that was in reference to. Like, what is the sliding scale that?
It's the top part of, oh, sorry. It's the top part of this chart where it goes 25, 50, 75, 100. That's what's considered the sliding scale. So if you make this income, you'll get 25% exemption. Oh, thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Doug.
Sorry. Thanks, Doug. So it's the top section. So if you make between 25 and 301 for a one-person family, you would get 25% taxable exemption, all the way up to 100, based on your, your poverty exemption, and whatever we choose to limit that at.
Yes. Okay. Got it. A question about the asset limit. Because when I think, like, the $4,000, $6,000 just does seem frighteningly low when we think about just general recommendations for liquid, liquid funds to be available to you, living expenses day-to-day. Is there, like, how much leeway do we have to set, to set an asset threshold? Because I'm thinking of, just jotting down here, it, like, to me, right, it's dependent upon, it's kind of dependent on property taxes owed, too, in a way, right? Like, because that's going to run the spectrum in addition to income levels and so forth. So could something be designed that says an asset level that is, you know, like, four times or five times property taxes?
That is up to your decision and discretion to make that limit. As, as you can tell in the, the chart that was in there with the different, this chart that was given to you in the, you can see that some of the asset levels on the right-hand side for the different communities.
They vary a lot, yes.
They vary a lot, and they're a lot higher than the 4, 6, which is the federal limit this year.
Right. They just, they all just have like a firm threshold, and I just wonder about being able to personalize that more, because, I mean, we talk about like income levels, but also the other big variable here is the property tax burden, which we know is dependent on how many years they've been in the home and what the home is worth, and so on and so forth. And thus, you know, the amount, the amount of assets that you need to have available to yourself are?
No, not at this time.
Okay.
Commissioner, if you will, let us go back and check that, because the, that variability as it's rated to tax bills, I don't know if that's something the state would allow us, that sort of flexibility. And we just don't know the answer to that question, but we can pose that question to the state tax commission.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I guess it's not a question, and I don't think we're making, I don't know that we're making a motion, but I just want to say, it's my experience, and I think that there's some sort of just general, general acceptability about the statement that, like, really good policy is not typically made when it's designed around trying to close every loophole for every bad actor that may emerge in any scenario. And that, you know, let's design for the best outcomes for the most people here. And, I mean, it seems like there's, this would be a lot of work to go through to save a few thousand dollars for a person who might be in a position where they'd be taking advantage of the system, which is not to say that that couldn't happen. But I think that, like, let's keep our eye on the North Star, which is how do we do the most good for the most people, rather than trying to consider every possible way that someone could try to cheat the system on this.
Are there any other questions at this point? And then we'll carry on for discussion after I take public comment. Okay. At this time, I will open this agenda item up for public comment. If there's anyone here that would like to speak to this agenda item, now is the time to do so.
I've been outside enjoying the wonderful weather instead of doing my homework. And when I did start to prepare for this, the internet was down. So what I wanted to submit for you, can I please?
Can you just, absolutely. If you can just please state your name and address for the record. I apologize.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Catherine Kriegbaum, and I live at 2249 Estelle Drive.
Thank you, Ms. Kriegbaum.
You're welcome. I agree with, with what Ms. Grove Blasek just said about doing the most good for the most people. I sent an attachment and an email in January. It's been quite a while, so I'd like to read some excerpts from that, and hopefully keep it under three minutes, since I don't speak very well in a microphone extemporaneously. My income for the past 13 years is from Social Security Disability Insurance. At $22,000, I actually, my take home is 20,000. The percentage of my income going toward property taxes is causing financial hardship. The Board of Review expressed a sincere desire to help me, yet said they had no choice but to follow the federal poverty threshold. I could not convince them that the word discretion did indeed give them the authority to decide what should be done in my particular situation. I believe you, we've all agreed to eliminate, and the state is requiring that Number 7 be eliminated. Yay. I'm happy with that. Because I- Because I, I think you're right, there's no way to validate the value of a car or a lot of things that are asked for on that government form that you have to fill out. I'd like to comment on that form. It's in, I didn't bring it with me, I'd put it up for an example. The forms that you fill out in order to get the poverty exemption have you state your budget, like what's your gas bill, what's your phone bill? It's really dated, like as if you had a landline and cable TV or not even cable TV with an antenna. I don't know why I have to disclose how I spend my money. I feel that's personal. And I think just going off the 1040 is sufficient. And I also think that assets should not be considered at all, if that's possible by law, only income, because jewelry can be considered an asset and that would involve going to appraisers. I don't understand Rochester's asset limit, last time I looked, was $100,000, which I thought was reasonable considering if the goal is to have people stay in their homes, they also have to maintain their homes. And I had the unfortunate incident of having to replace my furnace and my hot water heater, making it impossible for me to pay my property taxes this year. And I did have to file for an extension since, oops, there we go. Anyway, can I, can I submit something to the, even though it wasn't printable?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. I'll do that tomorrow when it's.
Oh, okay. Okay.
The, the internet was down.
Oh, for sure. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kriegbaum.
Hi, Erica Dutton, 2100 Gorham Drive, Southeast. I would ask just a few things that came top of mind as people were talking, one of which does go to Social Security Disability. It, it is very real. It has a very real impact on individuals as well as families. I think just simply going off the 1040 is a pretty transparent way of going about this without having to ask people to disclose far too much information and we are a community. I think it's also important, one thing that I haven't heard yet and may just be something for clarity, is if they're a homestead versus non-homestead resident. Ultimately to say, I think it might be really helpful to offer a course or some sort of means by which residents can be better educated as to how it could be applicable to them and what information would be appropriate to submit. The last consideration that I would call out is that there is a reality where people lose their jobs within the year. It may be before or after the tax filing deadline, so there should be some consideration for that scenario because we are families, neighbors, and friends. Hardships do exist and it is a difficult thing to come up and speak to a group of people about. It's just a very personal thing. And then finally is things such as deferred income or other types of savings that might be necessary to disclose would also be included on those 1040s. So I think that's a proper form to submit and it should be something that you can, it is a, it's a federal document. It's a legal binding document and we are expected to follow the law. So those are just the things that came top of mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Denton.
Hi, my name is Mary Lee Fisher. I live at 609 Lakeside, Apartment D. I have had the privilege of serving on the East Grand Rapids Board of Review for the past six years and have reviewed the proposed changes to the property tax, the property tax poverty exemption policy. Based on my experience, I recommend the following, some of you kind of stole my thunder. Double the federal minimum poverty guideline amounts. Please do not invoke the percentages listed. Percentages make calculations difficult and subject to error. Board of Review members are volunteers that serve two-year terms, thus consistency becomes an issue. Number two, increase the asset limit to $10,000 per household, therefore eliminating the single multiple designation. Number three, exempt motor vehicles from the asset limit. Number four, require a signed IRS Form 4506, I didn't hear what Charlotte said, if that's the same form, for independent verification of tax returns provided. If the commission implements different income or asset requirements than I recommend, I urge them to proceed cautiously, keeping in mind the following. Number one, the proposed gaslight investors development should have an impact on adding affordable housing. Number two, because the documents in the application cannot be validated, this is an area ripe for fraud. We do not know what we can't see. There are many sources of income and assets that applicants may not provide. Tax returns presented are taken as fact with no independent verification. Number three, many applicants own their homes free and clear. They are allowed to tap into the equity of their home for financial assistance. Reverse mortgages are readily available, federally insured, and they receive counseling from HUD. This program allows many U.S. homeowners to age in place. Number four, recently the city has had two significant losses in property tax income. The state mandated a property tax exemption for disabled veterans. This increased East Grand Rapids exemptions from about two to three to 20. This was a total loss of $200,000 gross property tax dollars. An additional 100,000 of property tax revenue was lost when the Blodgett Professional Building was absorbed by Corwell Health, a tax-exempt entity. In reviewing the city budget for this year, 77% of the general fund comes from property tax revenue. Every dollar is real and matters to the general fund budget. In conclusion, please remember the city commission has an obligation to the city and all citizens to protect the integrity of a key element of the annual budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Thank you. Was there anyone else that would like to speak to this agenda item? No? Okay. This time I will close public comment on this agenda item and bring it back up here for conversation, discussion. Would like to start with some ideas, anybody? Go ahead.
All right, I got some ideas. I got some, okay, so. Following up with the tax document, the IRS, now knowing that we can pull that, I think that's, I think that's a great idea. It really kind of eliminates some of the concerns that we might have, but also just makes it a lot easier on the applicant. I think that, I don't know if it's possible though, but so knowing that there are circumstances that change, you know, we're pulling tax, tax numbers from the previous year, things do change and sometimes abruptly in people's lives. So I don't, I'm wondering how to combat that and if there was, I guess I'm kind of speaking as I'm, a lot as it's kind of coming to me, but like, you know, if there's some sort of agreement that could be made saying, hey, you know, if you promise to also submit tax, your tax documents for the following year, based on your claim, if there was an exception saying, hey, you know, I, I lost my job or I lost, something that's changed significantly that would put them in a position where they would be potentially in line for an exemption? You know, is it possible then to pull their tax, have an agreement where they could pull the taxes the following year and if there's any, if, if it doesn't match what they said happened to them, that they would then owe the difference retrospectively? That's one thought. I'll just throw that out there just to, to consider. But the other, a couple of things I have in my notes. I like the idea of not maybe considering how people spend their money. I think we could just look at it more of a black and white. You know, how much are they earning, how much they, what their assets are? And then are they, are they exempt from paying property taxes or not and by how much? I do like the idea of eliminating the, the motor vehicle. I think that's also knowing that we, we eliminate the home, their primary residence, like you need a vehicle to get around, especially around on these parts. So I think that's a really good idea. Plus I have also heard that it is a hang up on trying to evaluate how much is a car value and knowing that that fluctuates sometimes on the daily. I think that just becomes a longer, a longer discussion that, and if you're trying to just stream, find a streamlined process, I think this is maybe a kink in the, in the machine that could be eliminated. I do like the idea of finding a better way to get the word out, especially to the people who need it. I don't know what that looks like, but, but I'm in favor of that because I think if there are people who need this type of assistance but don't know that exists, I think that's, that's a failure on our part, so. And then I also, I'm in agreement to, I'm just kind of looking at just like the, the table that I, I was presented to me and just kind of seeing how the other townships and municipalities where they are with their poverty guidelines and, and asset levels, you know, seeing that we are, you know, we're at the very minimum, did I get that right? Was it six, what is it, 4,000, 6,000, right? Single, multi? You know, so doubling the multi would be up to 12,000. So I'm, I'm, I'd love to see us, especially in light of just seeing how everything with inflation has increased significantly, you know, everything seems like it's doubled. So doubling it makes like, makes a lot of sense to me. So anywhere between the 10,000 and 12,000 dollar mark would make sense in my mind. I'd be in favor of that. And, and again, make, again, eliminating the single and multi and just making it just a flat number may help in streamline the process too. So those are my notes.
Great, thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Skaggs.
Yeah, while we were sitting here, I was looking into the ALIS rates in Kent County over the last couple of years and they're around double of what the poverty guideline is. And so I can see an argument for doing a straight doubling of the poverty guideline and just, you know, having it be our policy that something near, but yes.
What's ALIS?
Sorry. It's a asset limited, income constrained and employed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Basically, people who are working but still have trouble making ends meet because their take on pay is, is low. But it's a better gauge for how people are, are doing from a poverty level than like the actual federal poverty guidelines, which are just as low as they can possibly be. So I, I, again, I can see an argument for just doing like Ms. Fisher offered a, a straight doubling and like that's the, that's the threshold, that's the category. And I definitely think we should at minimum double the asset thresholds here. Even 12,000 is, is rather low and looking at our peer cities, they are far above that rate. So I can see, you know, the 25,000 to 50,000 dollar range making sense.
Commissioner Burdick, oh, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. No, no, no. I just want to ask Commissioner Burdick something. You mentioned when you guys were on Finance discussing, and I'm asking you just because you mentioned it, the simplicity. Was this doubling kind of the simplicity you were referring to or?
I mean, you can see why we wanted to bring this to the full commission because like everyone has fairly strong opinions on this. And I don't think any of us felt like we were subject matter experts enough to say definitively what the right number would be. And like, we wanted to hear everyone's opinion on that. Like for instance, the ALIS number is a lovely like benchmark that we hadn't even discussed because we didn't even know what ALIS meant. I can agree to that as well. So that's why I wanted to bring it to everyone is it was a doubling, but we wanted to hear from the rest of the commission and from the public on what, you know, what we do want to determine what that number is. I'm less concerned about the fraud. I feel like this is a federal document for the most part and all of this is, is sworn to be truthful when they present it to us. And like we can respect the law as the law and, you know, like we can't stop people from breaking the law and being fraudulent, but what we can do is, is make them attest to that. So I'm less worried about that. And I think what I was more worried about was like, what do we as a commission and as a community feel like is that correct number? Because that number is, like, once we have that number and what we're, once we're using a number that we're all comfortable with, I think it stays fairly straightforward from that point on.
Right.
Especially if we can do things like bring over the taxes and, and, and just the last little bit and then I'll let the next person talk. I also agree, I don't know if it's our business telling people what to spend their money on. So if we, and again, just to simplify this even more, like I don't need to go through and see if they spent their money on cable TV or, or new sweater or whatever it was. So if, unless that's something that's like required by state law.
Yeah, so just, just to that point is, I just pulled it down that that is actually a state of Michigan form that we have to use, so.
Well, I will come out and say that it's a bummer and if it was up.
Do we have to require that it be filled out? Does the state look at it?
Yes, 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 yes.
Okay, okay. When they add it, okay, thank you.
Okay.
And just to speak to that is, in a little bit of context and history in regards to the state of Michigan and their approach, one of the byproducts of the 2008 recession in particular, that the state took a step back and looked at how all local assessing units were operating and then pushed, I won't say pushed through, adopted a major revision to the law 2018-ish, I think is what I'm trying to remember. I was actually part of the, one of the work groups with the state associations for Michigan Municipal League at the table, kind of going through different things on this. And so what the state eventually did and had never done prior to mid, mid 2015 or so was weren't auditing their assessing departments and you were finding communities all over the map. So while the city has flexibility, some flexibility on its poverty exemption, specifically as it comes to the income and asset level tests, there are actual regulations that we have to adhere to. What can we ask for? What should we ask for? How do we ask for, it's state form, things of that nature. And we'll, for the next meeting, we'll pull all this together so you can, can see this. But just providing that context of the state is a far more active player through the State Tax Commission on monitoring and auditing assessing departments to assure consistency from community to community. So if, and like in kind of some family history is my, I think everybody's aware, my father was a city manager and he took over as township manager for a small township government in, in Livingston County. And that, in that case, they were giving away poverty exemptions based on who they liked and whatnot and the states had to rework everything. So, and there's actually a court case on it, so. But I just provide that, so yes, we have flexibility to, to a degree when we get into the assets and, and income, as we get into these other rabbit hole, excuse me, into these other details, there are some limitations to what we do. So I just want to provide that.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. And that leads me to another question. Does this only apply to the property taxes that go to the city or the state, county?
Everybody.
Schools, everybody?
Yep.
So the state gives us the power to say, we want to set a two and a half or a two times federal limit? And they're like, okay.
Yep.
Works for us.
Yep, we have that, we have that flexibility.
And yeah, just to put a bow on mine, I did some back of the napkin math while I was sitting here and from Ann Arbor, which is somewhat of a peer city, having 20 people was, because I think that's what we're all concerned about is it gets too high and all of a sudden everybody can apply for this. They have 20 people. If we were to scale that down as a percentage to East Grand Rapids, that's two. It's a little under two.
Right.
And their asset level is $50,000. So I think as we bring this back to the city staff and have it come back to us, it's, it's, because we're trying, we're grasping it like what that asset level should be and like what's an appropriate fair level for that. And, and I, I guess that, that's, that's still what I'm like, I'm really excited to hear what everyone else is kind of, where they all weigh in on this.
Great. Go ahead, were you going to say something?
The only other comment I can take from Commissioner Wesley's point in regards to those who are usually have lost their employment, et cetera, there are other programs as far as while it doesn't abate the taxes, but there are programs to ensure that homeowners don't lose their house for those kind of, you know, if you will, short-term situations. And we will include that in the next packet just regards to that. One of the things that Kent County as a whole has done a really good job on is those property owners that get into the actual tax foreclosure process, they're working hard to make sure they never get there and administering state, you know, programs that have been authorized by the state. That's actually something that helped drive down the number of foreclosures, just keeping people in their homes. And so that is a very active part of this process that Kent County is already on top of and the Kent County Treasurer, if I'm correct, yep, has really made that a mission of his. If you listen to him talk, he, they watch this like very, very carefully and not they watch this like, um, very, very carefully and not just um, our larger communities, but every community. And it's something that they've done, in my opinion, a really good job as compared to um, really the pre-two thousand eight recession. So.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Schwartz, go ahead.
Yeah, so I just, we were talking about like reaching out for assistance. Like, I'm assuming that there are ways when people do reach out for assistance that they're told, here are programs to help you. Is there a way that, or did I misunderstand? Is there a way to inform them, like, by the way, your, your city has a program that you should probably apply for? Can we make sure that they know that that exists?
Yeah, so, and again, a lot of times, um, and we see, if you will, some of the warning flags as we head into um, people, they'll either call us and say, I'm having problems with this, or um, utility bills is kind of one of those indicators too that we have. And Miss Heath, correct me if I'm wrong, but the national number of tax foreclosures we've had, property tax foreclosures we've had in this city have been pretty mu-
I don't think we've had any. We had a minor tiny parcel. It wasn't even a house. It was just a strip of land. That was the only thing. That's since I've been here. And Doug, I don't, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, we're not, we're, right.
I was saying Stacy's been here longer than me, so.
So, and we just share that data as, as a reference point of whatnot. You know, can we, should we do better? Absolutely. But um, as we look at what's going on out there and the foreclosures are really kind of those leading indicators or something, we don't just see those challenges. Doesn't mean that people aren't struggling, doesn't mean there aren't, you know, people who have their challenges. Um, but we're also not seeing the loss of homes to property tax foreclosures that um, we've seen in the past, or I've seen in the past in other communities, I should say.
Yeah, I think related to that is like, I, I want to look at the asset level because I think a lot of people, uh, you know, it goes back to dignity, right? Like, people want to keep their homes. Last thing you want is to lose your home. It's where you raised your family. So they're going to do things like sell the family heirlooms, uh, you know, like I, one resident just spoke to jewelry and it had me thinking like, you'd never want somebody to be in a position where they're like, my engagement ring that was given to me by my husband's grandmother and because of that, I, my assets are too high. And so I have to decide, what do I do at this point? And with an income or with an asset level even as low as ten thousand, I just, people are already down on their luck. I don't want to kick them while they're down and make them make really hard choices. Um, so I, I would be in favor of looking at higher asset levels. Um, and just, you know, I, we do want to do the most good for everybody and, and just make sure that at the same time we aren't hamstringing ourselves. And I'm, I'm less worried, you know, when I was talking about fraud, I just want to clarify. I'm, I'm not really actually worried about people lying or anything like that. But if you qualify, you know, for to, to not pay property taxes, like, I don't fault people for taking advantage of it. Um, so I just want to make sure we do it smartly while helping people who really need it.
If, the way I'm reading it, that states that assets include but are not limited to the real estate other than the principal residence. Okay, I think that, that's the clarification I needed. Um, so we're not including their own house that they're seeking the exemption for in the, in the number of assets. Okay. My other comment was going to be that um, without going on too, too long, I think, and um, while we're codifying income and asset levels, uh, as our subject matter expert Merrily Fisher noted, that um, these conversations do indeed and should be dovetailed with um, an affordable housing um, uh, document that the city could begin working on in terms of trying to define what those dollar amounts also look like. Um, I think that topic is um, uh, needs to be in front of the city in terms of what those dollar amounts really look like, in terms of assets and income and what truly is um, affordable housing in, in the eyes of the EGR uh, City Commission going forward. Uh, again, we're just trying to be as sensitive as we can to changes and fluctuations in income and asset levels. I, I, like Commissioner Graff, like I'm not too concerned with trying to keep people out of the exemption as most people, um, as I think anyone who has been on border review uh, could attest, you know, it, it's not a process people go into uh, in any sort of excited fashion at all. So um, uh, and as well, if, if there's any way finally uh, to create an affidavit, I see an affidavit listed on the state website, um, essentially admitting and certifying that, that the information here is correct. Um, I think anybody with any means of assets or income wouldn't sign anything like that, knowing that they're, they're trying to hide something, right? So, so if there's any other type of affidavit we could create, um, or if we could borrow one from the state to, to just have somebody sign on the dotted line that these, this information is correct, then I think we rule most bad actors out. So.
I mean, I think just looking at the, at the comparable data that you've provided for us, um, and we look at the, the poverty guidelines, the median household income, the asset limits, um, and our community's median household income is significantly higher than, than even those offering two and a half times the poverty guidelines. I thi, and as you noted, Mr. Charles, uh, the city of Birmingham saw two or three folks come forward um, to, to claim the exemption. So I, I mean, I think that uh, I would certainly have no problem looking at two to two and a half times the federal minimum as the poverty guideline is just kind of a, a flat fixed uh, threshold. And looking at certainly being, going higher hundred thousand, a hundred fifty thousand dollars like city of Birmingham in terms of the asset levels, um, because we're typically going to be looking at folks that are living on fixed incomes, that the amount of their assets has to sustain them for however many years are to come. Um, and, you know, we have to keep in mind that even those assets that they maintain are often invested in places where they don't have control over the outcome and how those things grow and how those are going to sustain them. Um, and so allowing folks to stay in their homes, to sustain uh, the appropriate amount of assets, um, to, 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 to maintain life and to live day to day, um, I, I think is what we need to be looking at. Um, and I think that the data that we have before, before us anywhere bears out that I think we can afford to look at it in terms of, of those parameters.
So is that what you're, just the general guideline is what you're saying, right?
Yeah, and we obviously have some homework and some additional information that we will provide at the next commission meeting.
Perfect.
Um, I will note that this is something that the city can revisit yearly. So if we set it this year, come back and go, ooh, and we'll make that sound specific, um, that we'll be able to um, provide updates to the commission. And um, you know, if we need to modify it next year, we'll be back. So.
Okay.
Um, with that, um, I will, um, we'll summarize all this, um, have it updated for the commission at the next meeting. And then we'll go from there. As I noted at the beginning of our conversation, it's November, our second meeting in, in um, November is really the target, um, so that we can have these in place for twenty twenty-six if the commission so chooses.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay, so next we will move on to consider approving the proposal for the placement of sidewalks at Remington Park for a price not to exceed eleven thousand dollars. That introduction is by City Manager Charles.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I noted, Director Melville is not here this evening based on Saturday's adventure. Um, we are recommending that we contract with AJZ Concrete for placements around sidewalks around Remington Park at a cost not to exceed eleven thousand. This is part of the field renovations that we did in partnership with the um, East Grand Rapids School, so addressed drainage issues, things of that nature. Um, looking at different areas, as we got into it, we were able to um, divide, identify some areas um, in and around the field themselves to help improve accessibility. Um, working with Hallerston Engineering and um, the, actually our sidewalk um, contractor for this coming year, um, we're able to avail ourselves of some really good pricing. So we're recommending that we proceed um, with this at eleven thousand dollars. This is a cost that will be shared fifty-fifty with the schools and they've already indicated their approval.
Wonderful, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Charles on this agenda item? Okay. Is there anyone here to speak to this agenda item this evening? Okay, that was public comment. Move it up here for a motion in a second, please.
Move to approve the proposal from AJZ Concrete for the placement of sidewalks at Remington Park for a price not to exceed eleven thousand dollars.
Second. Any further discussion, Commissioners? Okay, all those in favor say yes. Yes. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have to consider approval of Lake Management Services for services to be rendered for twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty for an annual average cost ranging from twenty-seven thousand four hundred dollars to thirty-four thousand eight hundred dollars. And that introduction is by Deputy City Manager, Mr. LaFave. There you are.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Commissioners. Um, as is noted, uh, we have a, a multi-year contract proposal before the commission. Um, I did provide a letter from PLM confirming with Eagle that their pricing is to the greatest extent possible, similar to their state contracts. Um, when we're looking at Reed's Lake, we have um, a few, at least one jurisdictional uh, challenge that we have on the eastern edge of the lake where a portion of that is in Grand Rapids Township. Uh, so they have a, an association that the township works with to treat that portion of the lake. They are currently under contract still with PLM. Uh, the city has worked with P, PLM uh, for the invasive species program, although uh, the most recent invasive species frog bit, which is noted on one of the pages here that I pulled off our website, um, funding has uh, is no longer available for that program uh, from the state level. Um, but um, when there are new and emerging threats, there generally is some initial funding and that is authorized with PLM as a vendor in our region. Um, so uh, I guess what I'm trying to say is that between our history with the vendor, the pricing locked into state contracts, and also between different levels of government, whether it's state, city of East Grand Rapids or Grand Rapids Township, um, we feel that's in the best interest of, of the treatment to have that vendor that's overseeing the entire lake instead of portions of it or, or different um, aspects. Um, you'll also see kind of a breakdown of from year to year where there's, there's some funding fluctuation there. And that's because um, the treatment cycle will vary from um, an entire, an entire lake treatment and in between those or on different ends of it, um, they will do surveys of the lake and then only treat those areas where there might be um, pockets of milfoil or, or algae or other things. Um, so they, on that cycle, it kind of builds, builds up to a, an entire lake treatment. And about that five, six-year cycle is what we typically see. Um, and that's why you see kind of a range there, a low and a high end, because it really just depends on, on what they're actually seeing, because they treat based off of what they see from the surveys. Um, with that, I'd be happy to, um, I, I guess I should also add, uh, we do post um, all of our water quality reports that we do. Uh, that is not an acquired thing. In fact, we're one of very few communities that actually does that testing and does provide that to the community. Uh, we do provide that um, on our website. It's really, it's really easy to find if you use the search bar for most things on our website. And we have a lot out there. But if you just were to search like Reed's Lake water quality, it would bring you to our environmental page where you can see that information, um, where we, we show all those results. Um, we do use um, those results from the testing that's, that's aligned with uh, treatment of the lake for management services, uh, for things like um, um, how we look at salting our streets and winter maintenance too. So we look at those results uh, on top of the use of other types of pavement sensors that we use during the winter months to make sure that we're not uh, a factor in, in impacting that water quality in a negative way too. So that's just an example of one way that we use that information to make sure that um, we're being good stewards of the environment um, with our lake. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions any of you may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. LaFave on this agenda?
I did take a, a look at some of the more recent um, water quality reports. Uh, just, you provided a link and I was like, I haven't looked at them in a while. Uh, and it noticed again that we consistently, consistently see a yellow or a caution um, indicator when it comes to the phosphorus enrichment.
Correct.
Um, and or to a lesser degree, the dissolved oxygen and the, and the fish health. Um, does this treatment help to nab, or help to mitigate those issues?
No, um, that's really more of a, um, I've had conversations and um, documentation with the, with the science, environmental scientists on this issue. That's really more of a historic um, uh, issue related to um, of lakes such as Reed's Lake in a similar type of environment. Uh, I think in terms of the um, the enrichment piece, what typically um, actually impacts that more than anything is really, um, and we do, we do share informational pieces and education out to the community. When we tell people not to put like grass clippings and stuff like that in up in your, your catch basins, that is a nutrient, that is a high nutrient load and, and likely the, the largest contributor. Um, so it's not with, with changes in environmental law, with fertilizers, those types of things. Really, it's really the, the housekeeping piece, um, where if you see your neighbor out with, with leaf blower blowing their grass clippings in the lawn or from the lawn into the street, that's a bad idea. Um, we do have a very active, comparatively speaking, to our neighboring communities, uh, street sweeping program. Uh, but again, we're not going to be out there every day to get everything. Um, and so, but that is, that is one of the, the major causal factors, uh, but not anything identified that we're doing today to, to increase that nutrient load. It really is more of a historic piece. And uh, from our conversations with the scientists, they, uh, they've indicated that, that they believe it's probably more related to housekeeping of our residents. Um.
Thanks.
Doug, so a question. Do you see, I guess, I'm going to start with by saying, stating a statement, I guess that might be somewhat controversial, but like, deep wakes certainly from boats, particularly from those deep, like those wake boats, can significant, I, what I've understood is that it significantly increases algae growth and resurfaces toxins potentially uh, by stirring up nutrient-rich and contaminated lake bed sediments in shallow water. Um, and knowing our lake is small and we know how, we have that. I was just wondering, is there, obviously I see there's a correlation with that. I just didn't know if you're seeing on your end this, a trend where we're having to treat this lake more often now than before or no? Do you not see this as being an issue?
No, and the, you know, what we have on our website is about a decade old, but even prior to that, we're pretty consistent in what we see. Um, in, in terms of that issue, um, I think there's other factors around access limitations to Reed's Lake and those types of boats. Typically, uh, the, the complaints that we've heard about, but again, we don't regulate um, Reed's Lake, that's a, that's at a state level, deputizing the county, et cetera. Um, it's, it's generally more nuisance, like someone damaged my dock or my seawall, that kind of thing.
Okay.
But we're not seeing any sort of fluctuation or change around that particular type of boat being introduced into the market in the last decade.
That's reassuring. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. LaFave? Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Is there anyone here to speak to this agenda item? Okay, I will ask for a motion in second in this agenda item.
So moved?
Second. Well, any further conversations?
Commissioner Graff, please. Did you make the second?
I did.
Oh, did, okay.
Yeah.
I heard a voice and.
Okay, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next we have to consider awarding a contract for the installation of holiday lighting on streets, trees within Gaslight Village Business District in the amount of twelve thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars. That introduction is by City Manager, Chief Charles.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So starting in twenty twenty-two, um, at the request of the community and the commission, um, we contracted to um, um, provide holiday lights for Gaslight Village. Um, we had an initial investment of actually purchasing the lights and then we've contracted subsequently with that company to hang them. Uh, G Rapids Irrigation, again, um, they have provided us a quote of twelve thousand one eighty-eight. Uh, it's about the same as what we saw the last couple of years. Um, so we are recommending proceeding with this. This is a budgeted item.
Well, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Charles? Okay, was there anyone there to, this evening that would like to speak to the tree lighting agenda item? Or I'm sorry, the streetscape agenda item?
Christmas.
Okay. All right, so um, that being said, I'll go for a motion in a second on this agenda item?
So moved.
Second.
Perfect. Any further discussion?
I wouldn't be opposed to seeing it up uh, all year round, but I love the lights. I think they're great.
I do. I love the lights too. Yeah, they're great. Okay, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Um, so next on the agenda is the e-bike and scooter information and discussion. Um, that introduction will be by City Manager Charles.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, as Commissioner Skaggs noted earlier, this was something that um, when we were developing the agenda and kind of looking forward, we, was not in um, something that we were in a position to do this evening. So we um, pulled together and whatnot. Um, just as far as setting um, expectations on, on the conversation is um, the staff began um, a few weeks ago, starting to look at, how do we address these issues and whatnot? So we are not here with policy recommendations this evening. We are not, um, we will. So we are not here with policy recommendations this evening, we are not, we will, when we get our, when we're at a point at a staff level we're comfortable enough, we will absolutely fully engage the commission in regards to decisions, ideas, options, things of that nature. So, but this is strictly, really is intended to be an update of just kind of where we're at, what we're seeing at this time. And then obviously, we will hope to do, we will do a deeper dive as we get ready for commission actions and things of that nature. That said, so just kind of where we're at, so e-bike and scooter usage has increased significantly in the last few years. Our primary concern really is our younger riders, high speeds, too many young people on a unit designed for one person, lack of safety gear, the interaction with pedestrians, sidewalks, and et cetera. Since the start of the school year, I should have clarified that, there have been three car e-device incidences. Two of them were involved, one was a 12-year, two of the riders were 12-year-olds, the other was 13. In two of the cases, the rider was completely at fault by not stopping at an intersection. They just went straight through. And then the third incident was a case of both the driver and the rider were at fault. We've been fortunate, and we know that, but so far, we've had only minor incidences. We had the unfortunate situation last summer, I believe, with the gentleman on the one wheel who didn't yield and was struck. But on that, all the incidences we have seen so far this school year has been very, very minor injuries. So the kind of internal work group we have going right now involves Public Works, Public Safety, Parks and Recreation, myself and our PR firm, Sabo. At this point, and again, this is, we're at the beginning of this process, so you may see us evolve on this as we come back and ready with a full presentation or full discussion is, we've identified kind of four target areas as part of the conversation. It's infrastructure, education, enforcement, and then ordinances, ordinance updates. Right now, our ordinances apply only to bicycles. Some communities have adopted regulating e-bikes and e-scooters. Looking across the spectrum in different jurisdictions and the approach that we've taken, following up then with those jurisdictions of, okay, you adopted this, what happened? City of Grand Rapids, their approach that they took, they approved something in the fall of 2024, that they define them as micro-mobility devices, and kind of broad brush here, defines what are micro-mobility units, who can use them in the public right of way, sidewalk speed limits, and requires helmet use, are kind of major themes that we saw that. We are starting to work through, how do we incorporate potential ordinance amendments for City Commission consideration? And we will be seeking some direction in regards to specific aspects on, do you want to include this or not? So again, not ready to do a deep dive on that this evening, but this is kind of their overall focus that we've taken. Infrastructure, just a quick overview, we're, you know, kind of what we've been doing over the last seven years now. 2018 master planning said, you know, included a goal to do a citywide mobility plan and to improve safety in pedestrians. The Bike, Mobility Bike Action Plan was approved in 2021. That was, again, a highly intensive community interactive session facilitated by Progressive AE. And then 2022, we then transitioned to do an implementation plan for near-term product, projects, wow, within the action plan. 2023, 2024, construction on bike lanes, Robinson Road, Glassstone, et cetera, again, that same timeframe, bike lanes on Martin Luther King Street, west to the city limit to Plymouth Road. The summer, we were able to complete the construction of a Robinson Cascade pathway. That really is a much heavier lift than I think everyone realizes, given the fact that this was a combination of interacting with the City of Grand Rapids, ourselves, Kent County Road Commission. We were able to secure a $1 million, yeah, $1 million grant to help fund that project. In addition, our state representative was able to secure some additional funding to help fund that, about $60,000 if I remember correctly. And then, again, bike lanes on Plymouth, which the commission approved this year, and then on bike lanes on Reed's Lake Boulevard. So we are consistently going through and looking at what's next, what's next, big phases that we have. We're looking at implementation of cross-town connectors and network residential on Breton and Lake in Boston, safer routes to school on Reed's Lake Boulevard, El Centro to Manhattan and South Side, sidewalk connector on Reed's Lake Boulevard on the north arm up to Robinson to connect into the Robinson Cascade pathway. Engineering on some of this is already complete and/or in almost process. As far as the connectors we have in the 25, 26 budget, 500,000 within the street fund for phase one, and then the 26, 27 budget, assuming City Commission approval, will help fund the balance of that. So that is something on, that we're working through and prepping to start engaging residents in the commission on the connector component on that. Just kind of a map of everything that we've done over the last few years and future upcoming projects as we look to continue to enhance and make our system even better than it is. So you see just the different projects that we are looking at and have forthcoming. And there is a copy of this presentation in the back for those in the audience who are interested. Education-wise, this, obviously, we're focusing on training riders regardless of age. There is a strong youth focus at the moment, but we recognize we're looking across the spectrum. Parks and Recreation offers training through Safety Town during the summer. It does not include a micro-mobility component yet, so whether we do a separate standalone program, making it part of Safety Town, or both, don't know. Public Safety does do safety at the start of each school year. And then we have very preliminary conversations with our partners at the schools about, what are those partnership opportunities, things of that nature? That's not, pleased to report that there is openness to engage on this, they have. And so we're starting to kind of very preliminary conversation with them in regards to, what would that look like? Who would we partner with? How do we do that, et cetera? So enforcement, and just a note, and I think I've shared this in the past with the commission, that while a lot of communities do have ordinances, the enforcement still remains a challenge and is, no one's kind of cracked that, if you will. At this point, we do not have ordinances of regulating these devices, and so really, if we wanted to do a lot of enforcement, we don't, we just don't have the stuff, the rules on the books, so we aren't doing that. And then how, how and how much is something that we're actively discussing, depends on what the ordinance amendments look like, as well as available resources in regards to how do we go at this? And myriad of ideas out there, we're trying to continue to look and refine that. So upcoming actions. So one thing that we know we'll be moving forward with, our tentative timeline is November of 2025, is changing pedestrian crossings from yield to stop. Grand Rapids has done this. Grand Valley Metro Council had a work group, including the six cities, townships, Kent County Road Commission, MDOT, and quite, obviously, GBMC staff. And they came to a recommendation, let's standardize this across the county to go from yield to stop. I think Grand Rapids and Sparta has the stop right now, right now. So we are moving with that. Grand Valley Metro Council is going to provide us model language once we have that in hand. We will bring that forward to the commission, November, December-ish, again, kind of depends on how much we got going on and everything else. Conversation with the commission in regards to the regulatory, potential regulatory structure. We are looking at spring of 2026, we're headed into winter, so we anticipate the use of these devices will decline dramatically as we get into winter, so we want to be ready to go. Again, we're targeting early spring as the weather is breaking to get in front of our youth population. Again, all these are timelines are tentative, subject to resource availability, things of that nature. But I guess my message this evening is, is that we are looking at this, we are taking the different opportunities. One of the big challenges that we see and we've been trying to work through is, particularly when it comes to infrastructure and dedicated lanes. We are a adult community, we are a street with narrow streets. We've done a tremendous amount of traffic calming throughout the city on our main corridors and in other targeted areas. I think we're one of the few communities that does have a dedicated traffic calming policy that our residents can find if they have concerns about traffic. We really encourage them to follow that process to help us identify that. So, but as we look at dedicated facilities, you're always going to have this balance between traffic calming techniques as well as the built environment, and especially when it comes to our tree canopy. We're so blessed in this community, just have amazing trees. And so to do, to widen roads and, you know, provide those dedicated facilities, it comes with a potential cost, and that's a policy decision ultimately for the commission of balancing, do we do this and this? And these are the actions that we have to take to get them built. So I just, again, some context, things that we're constantly thinking through and whatnot, and continue to work on in regards to all of that. So with that, I will open up to questions.
First off, I want to say thank you to Doug for your presence on the Grand Valley Metro Council and advocating for that standardization. I think that's an important change and so helpful that everyone's doing that together for that standardized piece. I know you've talked about that. When people travel across state, it's nice when things are standardized. So thank you for your work with that, because that's, I think, going to be an important change for our community. So thank you. That being said, are there any follow-up questions for Mr. Charles or Mr. LaFave on anything that you pointed out?
Yeah, just a super quick question. Understanding that these devices offer huge benefits in terms of like accessibility and sustainability and decreased traffic, we're not talking about the potential of an outright ban, correct?
Not, not to my knowledge.
Great, okay.
Question, any other questions?
This is just a comment.
Yeah.
I think, and I agree, I think this is, a lot of this is going to fall around enforcement in some cases, once we come up with our rules. When it comes to helmets, there is nothing more effective than those ice cream tickets that you guys give out to middle schoolers and elementary schoolers. They are incredibly effective, and maybe we write them for adults, too.
I like that.
One question that I had was, in terms of both the traffic calming measures, but also the timeframes involved, what would be the integration or coordination with upcoming traffic impact studies with this piece of, I don't know, with this piece of research and enforcement and, you know, et cetera? Just in terms of timeframe, and is there, is there any takeaways here in terms of coordinating those, those two?
Again, that's just kind of a default position that we have. Anytime we have new data, new, new, you know, changes within the community, whether it be driven by development or just we see a shift in traffic patterns. If you told me we would be talking about e-bikes and scooters, five years ago, I would say, it's an e-bike. So, so those are the things that, you know, we are, we strive to be adaptable, but also be measured and make sure that, anything that we do and bring forward to the commission, we want to be effective. We want to be able to say, yes, this is going to make a difference. And there are times in which we will do, you know, the commission may ultimately direct us to take actions that may be a little more, yeah, it's just nice to have it on the books type thing. But with that said, to kind of your core, your question is, additional information and data comes available, absolutely, that impacts how we look at things and whatnot. Commission is aware, we have the demonstration project right now on Reed's Lake and Lakeside with the two roundabouts, those will be coming out.
Next week.
Next week. So we'll go back to the existing conditions, but then we've done a tremendous amount of data collection on both counters, slow motion video, things of that nature, and that will help guide any potential future design changes in that area. So again, point being is, is that we're constantly looking at what's next and how do we make it better?
If I could, in terms of, you know, what we've been doing in terms of the engineering piece, as Manager Charles noted, we've completed that in like the cross-town connector, so your Lake Drive, your Breton, we've completed, staff has completed that, Boston, for example. What we've been doing this fall with school back in session is we've been doing on-street parking utilization studies to document, you know, the use of that, which is a standard step we take on any of these types of potential projects, because the, typically, the biggest challenge is related to parking and what that is. We have purchased and utilized some time-lapse cameras as well that we can help maybe validate. Sometimes we find that people don't believe the studies for the utilization, and so we wanted to have another, another mechanism where we can see what that utilization is maybe over like a two-month period in a, you know, two-minute video or something like that, or something very short, so you can actually see what's happening there. We also account for looking at, we've spent time to analyze some of what we did in Plymouth, every single driveway on Breton and Lake Drive and Boston to determine how many vehicles somebody can store in their driveways. And there's not one property that doesn't have a driveway in any one of those stretches. And we also look at approximate, close parking that's by two, because again, we understand that if there's someone's having a Christmas party or some large event, we want to, we just, we want to make sure that they have reasonable parking that's close by, that they can use beyond their driveway. Oftentimes, that's a minor inconvenience, but what we're trying to look at designing for is that infrastructure for all road users, including micro-mobility, which separating them from travel lanes and from sidewalks, certainly from an infrastructure perspective, we think will help enhance safety in the community.
I had a quick question about the safe routes to school. What is the status, what is the status on that?
So we will be engaging back with residents primarily in the North Shore of the lake along Reed's Lake Boulevard from El Centro to Manhattan area. One of the things that we've done with engagement for any of these projects, whether it's been the side path on Robinson Cascade, et cetera, is in advance of getting the projects to the City Commission at a staff level, we set up, or for the opportunity for one-on-one meetings with each resident. We also attend neighborhood meetings. I know some of you have been a part of those in the past, so that we can really dial in on that individual level to go over issues related to infrastructure changes. That particular project, we don't have a, we don't have approved, I would say, we have concept designs is what we have, so we don't have anything approved quite yet by MDOT. I think when we're looking at the, there's various aspects of this project, which is available on our mobility page, also on our construction updates page, for anybody who is interested in looking at those. We put them in both landing spaces, so if you searched "safe routes to school" in the search key on the, on the website, you will be brought to those, so you can read some of our support background documents and kind of the process. But in terms of that project, we don't have a defined authorization yet for any of the, any of the feedback there. I think the biggest one's going to be related to sidewalk on the south side of Reed's Lake Boulevard on the North Shore area. What uniformly we got from residents was, they didn't want, either did not want to have any infrastructure added in the right-of-way there, whether it be sidewalk or anything, but if they had to, they preferred it to be a five-foot sidewalk. Would comments with the rest of the community, they did not want to have any sort of, and it was very universal, I don't think there was one, one individual or household we met with that wanted something more broad than that. What we're questioning, or just having discussions with MDOT is, about half of the property in that stretch is city-owned. In addition to the right-of-way itself, the park properties adjacent to it are city-owned, and so we're trying to see if there can be some flexibility to allow for some widening for shared-use pathways. Somewhere, if you think about a two-lane highway where there's passing zones, because one of the issues that is very apparent from not just working here but living here and experiencing that environment is, the five-foot sidewalk on the north side, people tend to bleed into the roadway because there's such high usage that if someone's pushing a stroller and then there's people running and biking and other things, there, there just isn't enough room for them on that, on that sidewalk. just isn't enough room for them on that, on that sidewalk. So that's just a quick synopsis of the bigger part of it. The other, the other aspects I think are, have been pretty universal in terms of our feedback.
Okay. In terms of the, the e-scooter and the enforceability, I know that a lot of communities have struggled with that enforceability piece and certainly have you, can you just give an example of what other communities are doing? I thought some were doing like a weight.
Honestly, we haven't found anybody who is actively enforcing.
Okay, so it's basically just performative ordinances?
Yeah. And I'm careful in saying that because that then refers something that may inadvertently infer something that communities, we're just all struggling as municipalities throughout the state and I would argue.
How to enforce it.
Yeah. And throughout the country of how do we enforce it and things of that nature, so.
I will say, even though like enforceability might be tough on some of this, even just having some ordinance on the books with like, these are our rules, can kind of get in front of some, I don't know, hypothetical dads with 12-year-olds and 13-year-olds that are asking for these dirt bike, e-bikes that go like 60, which we don't want to get them anyway. So it, of course, some people might not follow the rules, but even just having that in the books where it's like, them's the rules, man. You're, you got a level two, that's what you get. Whatever those recommendations are, even if like we don't have a full plan on how the enforcement might come in, having the rules out there and educating the parents and the kids on it so that like they know could just help some parents out on, on that.
No, and again, as, as we move through this process, we're, all these things will be brought forward to the commission and we'll get different things, so.
So on that topic, there are several things that are in place that could be enforceable. And I wonder during this period of time in which we are trying to explore what, what the more permanent policy and education and infrastructure and enforcement things are going to be, if there are some things that we can do. You know, we've got, state law says that, that there is state law on regulating e-bikes. And it does say that local municipalities can prohibit use on sidewalks and crosswalks with various traffic control devices. And we currently have that in Gaslight Village. And I know that I hear from a lot of residents, hey, we've got these signs up that say no bicycles and every day there's bicycles and now e-bicycles and e-scooters. And I wonder if we could do some, some targeted enforcement, even if it's just, you know, some public safety there saying, hey, guys, get off your bikes. Remember, there's a sign here. And Commissioner Burdick there, the state law does actually regulate that no one under the age of 18 may operate a class three e-bike. So it's there. Of course, the, what the classes of e-bikes are, are not super, super clear all the time, but it is certainly something that we could look at, again, I think, and consider in this in-between time. And I think the other one that, again, I hear it from a lot of residents, is that, is the helmet issue on e-bikes, that state law requires properly fitted and fastened bicycle helmets up to age 18. So like not hockey helmets, not, you know, whatever else we might see, football helmets, that that's another thing, like that some just gentle targeted enforcement, I think, might, might go a long way in this interim period.
I wanted to add about, or I had a quick question about the videos. I know that the video, the city did videos a number of years ago, I want to say it was like 2018, 2019, something like that. Were those in conjunction with the school? Because I do think that education piece is very important. I can't remember.
And I think, I believe the answer to that question is yes. We have updated numbers to update those videos in general and we're, again, this is that, trying to get all the pieces to work together and, and timing and things of that nature. So we're, when I say everything is on the table right now, everything's on the table for us. And then filtering through, you know, what, what's going to be kind of the best approach. This is not going to be a overnight, overnight, this is suddenly fixed. This is a long-term issue. And it's going to be an ongoing issue for us as a community because as our, you know, children progress through the school system, it's, can I have a new group of kids to, new kid, new group of kids to train each year and reinforce with those who are existing users. So we are, again, it's, everything is on the table for us in regards to that.
I'm just encouraged to hear that, that schools are willing to have these conversations and that be part of that process because I think the education piece and getting the word out, even to parents, educating parents, I think is, is going to go a long way, right? Enforceability is only like one part of it, I guess, so. Were there any other questions for Mr. Charles?
Are we, just in terms of structure, are we doing public comment and then further discussion?
Yeah, that's what I thought, if that works.
Yeah.
Did you have any questions also, Mr. Charles? I know you have.
I mean, not really, not really questions. I, I think primarily like a thank you to everybody for getting this on the agenda. And so a thank you to staff because I know you weren't quite ready to do anything at this meeting and we kind of forced your hand, but it is timely and, you know, thank you for adapting. And thank you to staff who's always been working on these issues for weeks, months, years. And it's just, it's, it's nice to see it all come together. It dovetails nicely with some of the work that, you know, a couple commissioners and I have been doing with the public, the Walk Ride Roll Group, who's here tonight to speak, among other people. And I think it's just clear that we all share this mission right now to do something. And so, yeah, I'll, I'll save further discussion for later because I know everybody's waiting to make comment and go to bed.
Oh, nice.
So I'll just leave it there for right now.
Okay.
We'll watch the Lions game.
That being said, I will open this up to public comment. If there's anybody here that would like to make public comment to this agenda item, now is the time to do so. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Tanya De Oliveira and I live at 1851 Hall Street. And I'm here today as a parent, as a member of that group, Walk Ride Roll, East Grand Rapids. It came to you several months ago. And also as a, I'm also a professional community transportation planner with a consulting group here in the Grand Rapids area. And first of all, just want to echo thanks and gratitude for the hard work taking on the issue. Safety is pretty hard to argue against and yet it's so important and imperative. Just generally speaking, love what's happened on Plymouth. I actually bike to work sometimes when life permits and I take that bike lane to start my commute or in my commute. I also love the roundabout because it's, roundabouts make it, slow people down and it makes it safer. And then also the protected bike lane demo that happened on Franklin, MLK, whatever that is officially stop starts, love that as well. So thank you for all the work staff has been doing in that. I also am excited to hear, because one of the tenants that we were interested in for Walk Ride Roll was supporting opportunities for education, particularly at the school level. There are models across the country and I'm sure here in the state in terms of advocating and getting, you know, sort of education in front of students. And really excited to hear that the school is interested in talking with the city. So as a parent and as a professional planner and as a safety advocate, I look forward to hearing more about that and as time goes on. I also just want to sprinkle in there the idea of a micro mobility lane, not just bike lanes. I'll leave that and you guys can think about that later and Google that yourselves. I also want to say enforcement isn't as important as education. So culture change goes a long way when it comes to, like, education and infrastructure go together. You know, like those ice cream coupons, yeah, man. I mean, there would be nothing greater than to get those for adults, right? Reward people instead of just continue to, you know, hand out other tickets or infractions. It comes across a lot better. Maybe other places can reward people instead of handing out tickets. I also just want to voice just generally, I liked what City Manager Charles said about the concerns about streets and limited right-of-way and amazing street trees and how do you balance safety and bike lanes and not enough space? I just want to encourage thoughtful discussion over time about how that might happen along Breton in particular, just because of all of the traffic counts there, or traffic, not counts, traffic, the daily counts that happen there. And in particular, when the mobility plan that was put together in 2021 or passed in 2021 adopted, there were not the new ashtoe guidelines, which I'm sure city staff are aware about. And new data has come forward to help leaders, practitioners, engineers, planners make decisions on what kind of infrastructure is available. So I just want to speak to that as well. So that is all for me and I'm not sure if someone here next to me might.
No.
Okay. All right. So anyways, this is my daughter Nora. She also lives at the same house. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Anyone else care to speak to this item?
Hello, my name is Anthony Maurer at 421 Lakeside Drive Southeast. And apologize, I have a bit of a cold, so I'll try and make this quick and, and everything there. And also, this is in the context of the two, two sentences that were actually in the, the posting there, but I appreciate the more details that we got today and everything like that. So Mayor, Commissioners and City Staff, it's all, it's been about six months since the EGR Walk Ride Roll Group members met with the city staff. And I really wanted to commend the city on the number of pedestrian safety items that have been addressed and completed. The successful completion of the Plymouth Road Bike Lanes, Robinson Road New Sidewalk, and introduction of new vehicle radar signs and pedestrian alarm beacons. You clearly have heard the EGR residents wish for a safer city and have made excellent progress and I really think it's been a job well done. Now, I also thank you for now addressing the topic of electric mobility devices. This is a hot topic being discussed throughout the country and is especially important for EGR given our highly congested school campus and that families are responsible for their own school transportation. Electric mobility devices will only become increasingly popular and are just going to be a part of the reality of daily commutes. Recently, there have been some incidents involving pedestrian e-bike accidents that have been publicized on Facebook. And having a clear set of guidelines and rules and regulations for electric mobility devices are a key part of making these devices safer for all users and pedestrians. The other areas for a successful electric mobility integration is a strong training process for electric mobility users. I really think that the carrot works better than the stick in this case. So whether it's ice cream or other things, I think it's definitely the way to go. And also, whatever you do, doing it in conjunction with our excellent EGR public schools will be key. And I believe that starting the planning with the schools should be done in parallel with creation of any new regulations. And just once again, thank you for helping to start this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maurer. Thank you.
Tom Tillma, 1635 Hall. I want to echo what the two previous speakers have said about the hard work that the city's been doing. I'm so supportive of the efforts that I, that I saw on the slide presentation. Very grateful for that. You know, between the staff and advocacy groups like Walk Ride, Roll, EGR, you could easily come up with, you know, a few dozen interventions, right? When you have something as complicated as traffic safety, it's going to require dozens of interventions. And you can see how many of those are already started and over time, the hope is, especially with education, right, that, that will start to turn the tide on, on traffic safety with regard to the e-bikes. When we spoke on March 31, we had about 15 people speaking. This is the Walk, excuse me, Walk Ride and Roll EGR group. About 15 people supported our agenda. We had about five or six points that night. We had groups there, representatives there from Run G R, Strong Towns G R, Friends of Slow Streets and, and our group. We've tweaked that a little bit. I just want to focus on two of those, the crosswalk thing. If, if the GVMC is doing the Grand Rapids model as it currently is, is that okay to ask you that question?
Sure. That's okay?
Is the Grand Rapids person?
It's, it's some, it's not, it's not in stone yet. It's basically, there will be a guidance document, which may be different than that, that'll be provided.
Okay. Well, the Grand Rapids, they do talk a lot, you know, emphasize that they have stopped now, not yield. But it's really not a significant difference from what they had before. Right now, yield means when you're driving down the street, I've mentioned this before, you see a pedestrian stepping into the crosswalk, then you have to stop. And only then they have to be actually enter the crosswalk. Then the pedestrian goes halfway across the street and the traffic coming the other way does not have to stop until that pedestrian has reached that halfway point. That's just really hazardous and crazy, right? What Grand Rapids is doing is saying, as you approach and a pedestrian enters the crosswalk, not only do I have to stop here, but the other car has to stop. So that's safer, but really, the better approach is the Ann Arbor approach where if you see somebody waiting to cross, you stop. Of course, it's hard to enforce, will require a lot of education, but really that is making the stop required for people who are awaiting to cross is, is mentioned in our document. Also, the standing committee idea, that's number six on our list, that's, that's a tweak. And we do think that having more public involvement with the standing committee is important. These issues are discussed all across this community all the time, as you know. Having a standing committee be an important way to start, get the word out and to build that community support that you're going to need.
Thank you, Mr. Tillma.
Kevin Hagler, 27, like 2714 Cascade Road? I don't know, I just moved there. Anyways, I appreciate.
Well, welcome.
Well, we moved in April. I've lived on Lakeside, I've lived on Warwick, so I've lived in every school district in East Grand Rapids. I want to thank you for the sidewalks on Cascade Road. My daughter certainly feels safer riding her scooter to school and riding home from school with, with that. But again, I want to kind of express, you know, my concern as a parent is I have driven, living on Lakeside Drive and my daughter going to Lakeside Elementary. I've driven on Hall Street and had a biker pull straight out in front of me on a bicycle on Hall Street where I luckily stopped before I didn't hit the person on a bicycle. So I think this is a issue for not just the electric scooters, but again, being on the Cascade side, my daughter needs that scooter so she can get to swim practices and she can get to all of those things. I know she feels safer at the crosswalks where the lights flash and she's the type who, yeah, her scooter will go 15, but she keeps it set at a lower speed. And I just want to make sure that we, as we do set rules and regulations, that we make sure that we think them all the way through and not just slap something on the books and make sure that there's a lot of thought to this. I do appreciate the slides that you put together. We're really good and I am excited for, you know, certainly if helmets are required on bikes, they should be, they should be required on scooters as well. And I really do think that, you know, I like the direction we're headed with, you know, at least helping with the education and working with the schools. So, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Hagler.
Hi, my name's Janet Deitch. I live at 562 Greenwood Avenue. My comment is, I think 15 miles per hour on the sidewalk is way too fast. I walk to my grandkids and the bikes going by, they're not going 15 miles an hour, but they were like, it felt dangerous to us. We almost got hit by the bikes and they're probably going five miles an hour. The other thing is Eric Dutton asked, she had to leave, someone to read her comments. So I'm just going to read her comments. She states that we already lost one resident in June of 2024. Both residents and groups have asked for proactive response. She agrees, we want to embrace new technology as it does serve as a solution during limited times of year. And the ice cream, great. She personally offered to fund that during the bike implementation, I think. And one of her big issues was that because there's not a rule, we're not getting data. So once there's a rule, you guys might have some more data about accidents or whatever. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Deitch.
My name is Christine Duquette and I live at 1649 Seminole Road Southeast. I wasn't going to say anything, but I'm originally from Minneapolis and I, my brother's family still lives there and same ages as my kids. And they did implement some laws and it's 15, so I'm very nervous, it's 15, age 15, and they, their police district has Instagram and they put out videos and that really got the word out. And the flyers, there are flyers that go out. So I think we could, there are a lot of communities that we could learn from. And I think it's really important, if we're making bike lanes more safe, we can make our sidewalks, sidewalks more safe, too. our sidewalks more safe too. And I'm just excited to be a part of this. I do remember, I'm talking really fast. I do remember when I was a child and they were trying to implement helmets, and like, look how far we've come. And it has to start at some time. And I'm so scared for my kids on the sidewalks. We do foster such independence for our kids, which I love. But I have a seven-year-old and a 10-year-old, and I'm scared for them. And yeah, I'm not sad, I'm just nervous. Oh, it's fine. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Would anyone else care to make a comment to this? Mr. Anderson?
Hi, Jerry Anderson, 435 Edgemere. I think like all the adults in this room, I've witnessed some near misses and been really scared with what's going on with the e-bikes. I'd like to just kind of, for credentials, say I care about middle school kids. I was a middle school teacher for 20 years, and most of my adult life, including today, I spend many hours a week volunteering with middle school kids. So I care passionately about them, and I think I understand them better than maybe the average person. And I'd like to say, in working with them, first, don't underestimate the intelligence of middle school kids. Their every bit is intelligent and more capable of learning than pretty much anybody here. They're just at that point in life where they embrace learning more. On top of that, though, middle school kids, more than us, have a very acute sense of fairness. And they need, they respect, and they expect guidelines. And they will tend to stay within those guidelines, but they will only stay within those guidelines because they also need, respect, and expect consequences. And they think it's not fair if people who break rules don't suffer the consequences of breaking those rules. I wish I understood adults as well as I did middle school kids, but I think that that's true. So I encourage, as I think you're doing, that you go through three phases of this with the kids involved. And first is to educate them in a good targeted education, involve teachers who are used to working with children of that age, and make sure that the materials you're giving are appropriate in a way they want to learn. And then a phase two, having a warning, kind of a practice period, hey, this is what it will be like after this. And phase three, you have to have the enforcement period. Because if they know that by breaking, when they break the rules, nothing's really going to happen, they're not going to abide by those rules. But they want to, but they won't. So there, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Did anyone else want to make a public comment to this agenda item? Okay, hearing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back up here for further discussion.
Sure, I'll start. So I think, I think I have two points I'd like to make. The first is a personal commitment to infrastructure. And what I mean by that is, we keep hearing, and we live in a type of community where people need to use these devices. This is how people get around, and they're a good thing to lean on. You know, it gets somebody who lives on Cascade to school, to practice. And so it's, how do we do it safely? And I forget everybody who said everything, but the sidewalks should be for people who use the sidewalks for walking, or like, running, toddlers for biking, slow speeds. So we need to give the other users someplace to go. And what does that mean, and what does that look like? I don't think it's an easy answer at all, but I think it's like, big conversations that we need to have here, and more importantly, in the community of like, what does that mean to us? You know, hopefully not chopping down trees, but does it mean we get rid of row of parking somewhere in a high-traffic area to put in a mobility lane? So that kids can get to school on these devices, to make their parents' lives easier, make their lives easier, and also keep our sidewalks clear? Because I saw emails on it, I've lived it myself, I've had to pick up my toddler and swing them into the grass because someone goes zipping by on an e-scooter. And we all, we all want to use our sidewalks, we're a mobile community, let's just try to do it safely. So I, you know, I just want to say, I am committed to looking at big infrastructure ideas. I want to have these conversations. And so to kind of, you know, dovetail into that, I saw in the upcoming actions, the idea to have a November/December work session with us to refine the regulatory structure. And I would like to propose, I think it makes sense to keep them separate because there's a lot going on, but I think we could have a cross-functional work session, if there's appetite for it here. And so, you know, I don't want to pretend like I know exactly what that looks like, because to me, the point is, let's get input from residents who, you know, have all different perspectives. And like, we had one resident who comes up who's an expert in this field. And so let's invite all of the public to come, let's invite staff to come, let's, you know, find a time that works for our traffic engineers, so we can get their viewpoints on what does and doesn't work with certain ideas. And make it, and hopefully, school administration, because to everybody's point, like, the education has to be such a central part of this. So how do we connect all those pieces? And we all know that this is not, that like, these meetings are not a good environment to have that back and forth and exchange ideas. So I would suggest that we have a like, you know, go-forward work session for like, go-forward strategy, you know, see what comes out of it, but get all of the players, all the interested parties in the room to talk about what we do, how we prioritize, those kinds of questions.
I think a work session's a great idea. That sounds like a, just getting all that input, getting all that information, I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't know if that was a motion. How do we do a work session? Do I?
Right now, it's just a, right, because there's one, so I think we can, if there's appetite for that. Yeah, okay, we got a thumbs up, so. Yeah, great idea. Thank you. Were there any other comments? Michelle Wesley, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I was going to say that, you know, thanks for this, you know, Mr. Charles, Mr. LaFabe and the staff putting this together and putting this on the agenda, it's important. And especially in light of my, in my corridor of Ward 2, you know, having, you know, the Breton Corridor, having a lot of near misses, fatal accidents last year, you know, it's on the forefront of, I think, a lot of, not all of East Grand Rapids, but especially, I think so, in Ward 2. And I think this is a big, it's a big thing, and it doesn't, it takes, as they say, a village, right? It takes the city with ordinances and how do we, you know, how do we enforce it? That's a key thing. But also the school and them involved, and I love that they're interested in participating, as well as the parents. And it comes down to the parents too. So we've talked about this enough, but I think I'm just echoing what was set up here, but it's super important. I do also think that, you know, I like the idea of throwing out some more social media out there. I've been a big advocate, as you know, for TikToks. It's not the first time I've said it. So I think that, you know, I think it's about time that, you know, we have a really cool city, we should really have a really cool social media presence, and that could gain more traction. And so if there's appetite for that, I'm happy to do my first TikTok with Director Bukama, if we want to do something fun. I know that he loves the camera. But again, I'm like I said, joking on the square, meaning I'm half joking, but I'm also half serious. I think we can do, we can elevate our message. And especially knowing that a lot of people have been getting a lot of their information on social media. We can't necessarily pass ordinances and laws through Facebook, Instagram, and TikTok. But we can definitely put the message out there, especially when it comes to these very clear, nonpartisan issues that we all can get behind, which is, you know, safety first, and making sure like, not only the person driving vehicles, which are sometimes very young people, and the others, the young people, or it doesn't matter the age, on these e-bikes that are going wicked fast. I think it is important that we are discussing it, thinking about ways, creative ways that we can not only enforce but educate, and then, and as a community, getting on the same page to go, look, we want to be safe, here's what we're all agreeing to do, starting with helmets, you know? And I think I love, I'm always in favor of creative ideas, the ice cream, we just keep going, what else could we do that could incentivize the behaviors that we like to see that invoke safety? So that's my comment for tonight. But I'm really, I'm really excited about seeing where this conversation goes and seeing that what we can do to make East Grand Rapids even safer. Thanks.
Okay. Commissioner Skaggs, I know you're short on time, so if you had something to add.
Yes, I do have to go in just about two, three minutes. So just wanted to throw a couple things out there. This is exciting, right? That there are all of these evolutions and adaptations, but like, brings challenges along with it, and I'm glad we're tackling it. And I think it's really important that we look not just around the state, but we take that nationwide search, you know? We're a small town, I understand that. But I think, you know, seeing what larger cities are doing who have approached this before we have is important, whether it's Minneapolis, or New York City, or whoever it is, all around the country. I think like, let's look and see who else is leading the way, because I think, you know, we need to lead the way in Michigan. And hopefully do something really effective that other people can come along with too. Really, it's really important to me that we learn the soft lesson here and not the hard lesson before a kid gets really hurt or is fatally injured. So I'm just glad we're having this discussion. I'm excited to look at everything on the table. I think we have to take education as a priority, clearly, that's what our kids need. And then enforcement has to be the other side of it, though. I'm totally with Mr. Anderson that have a, enforcement sets boundaries, and that's what kids need. And clear expectations about what they should be doing is, you know, doing them a favor when we provide those to them. And we can come along with parents and, you know, we'll all work together to make sure everyone's safe on the roads, sidewalks, in the mobility lanes, in the bike lanes. Trying to think. I love the idea of like, a public health campaign, basically, to get out in front of this. I don't know what that looks like. My middle schooler, you know, does weird things, like reads the classics, so she's not a great example for me to look at, for like, what's cool with middle schoolers these days? Because she's like War and Peace, and I think she's wrong. But I think that, you know, figuring out just where to meet them where they're at is huge. That's all I, that's really all. Thank you. Yep. Oh, go ahead.
Just one thing, because I do think I want to also come out very publicly in support of infrastructure changes as a major solution here, because we can educate all we want, but we have to give them a place to go. And I speak for, as someone that lives on the far side of the lake, it's 1.8 miles from my house to wealthy elementary school. So we aren't in one of those spots where you can just walk to school very easily. Or just as importantly, there might not always be, a parent has the privilege to be available at 3:05 every day to pick their kid up. I think, just as Commissioner Skaggs said, it is exciting, because this is a new, a new way for kids to be more mobile in a town where we all have moved here and we all live here, to encourage their independence and encourage their mobility. So I think, I'm very much for setting good, solid rules and good education, but I want to be very aggressive, I guess would be the correct term, with finding ways to improve the bike infrastructure, to give these people a place to go, especially in parts of town where it just aren't connected. Like when we hear from someone who was on Cascade Road, we were fairly aggressive about getting that road diet done and putting a sidewalk in. And I can tell you firsthand, I've watched kids who before would have had to take a car from Cascade Road up to Manhattan Park for a birthday party, ride their bikes or ride their scooters up to that park and then ride it home. And I think on top of just the convenience, it gives them the ability to do things that maybe they wouldn't be able to if their parents aren't available. And just as importantly, it's just another reason for them to get outside and get to those parks and get to those places independently, which I think we're all looking for. So the better ways we have to do that, the safer ways we have to separate these three, essentially three different speeds of traffic, I am fully on board for looking as aggressively we can to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll say, this is, so this is, this is a really sticky adaptive, big, deep adaptive change that we're looking to make. And, you know, there's lots of technical changes that we can make to get there, but ultimately, this is a culture shift that we need to do with the community. I mean, we witness any debates that pop up, right, about infrastructure, for example, just about infrastructure, absolutely. Finding a place to put e-bikes is a great step to take. And people say, I don't want my young kid on the scooter in the road in a bike lane, right? Each technical solution that we offer, I think, at this point in time has got to be met with a valid, like, valid concerns. All of that is to say, I love the idea of a work session, and I think that that work session will help us to kind of set the, what was it, sort of the long-term plan for how we move the community, how we move with the community through this adaptive change. And I'll echo what we heard from Mr. Tilma and what the Walk-Ride Role Group has added to their white paper that I shared with everyone, is I think the idea of a standing community group to help us through this is going to be key to the success overall in adopting these changes and then getting people to use these changes as well. Because we need, we need as many voices out there, holding as many conversations, getting as much feedback as possible. And we also need to be really ready to listen and take all the feedback that we can, and the feedback's going to be conflicting and it's going to be sticky. And we all have the same end goal, which is safety, right? So I'm going to advocate that we really take a look at, how do we not just involve residents one time or through public comment, but how do we involve them in this process of adaptive change for the community? One thing that I want to pull out too, when we talk about education, that I want to be really, I want us to be really careful upfront, that we're not just focusing on our younger students, our younger kids who are learning how to use these devices, but we're also focusing on our older students who are driving cars in a new environment that is full of these new devices, and that that extends to adults as well. Because as we change infrastructure, as we change rules, as we just, you know, I mean, all of us who are driving around, like, there's a new level of awareness that I think we're starting to build, anticipating these different devices that we're seeing out there. And then I'll come back and say, just to kind of circle back to where the comment that I made earlier, is that when we look at, okay, what is the pathway for this process, for these changes that we want to see in the community? That we look at, what are some quick wins and low-hanging fruit as well? That it's not just, what is it that we want to get to ultimately, and what's the good solution over time? But what can we do now to start testing and signaling and building buy-in across the community?
Yeah, gosh, not a lot's been left unsaid. A group of dedicated commissioners to my left and right around, for me, you know, kind of a topic I approach with the same kind of apprehension or just kind of nervousness that you have around issues of kids' safety. You know, I know we talked a little bit about how to educate and enforce 12- and 13-year-olds. I'd echo Commissioner Groff Blazak in saying, let's educate and hold accountable drivers of the vehicles as well. I love the idea of an independent, kind of, community-based, decentralized group that would be able to channel and funnel information up to us here and to city staff, as well as the social media presence that Commissioners Burdick and Wesley referred to. I think obviously that's what kids' eyeballs are glued to, so if we can, you know, do our best to get some positive messages out through those channels, it'll make the awareness that much deeper and greater and longer lasting. But yeah, we're kind of forced to deal with this, reality of the new technology of how people are getting around. Kudos to city staff for the work to get us here thus far.
Do you feel you have a good direction?
Yep. As I noted at the beginning of this conversation, none of what has been discussed is surprising to us. We continue to work on this. And again, this is, we absolutely recognize, this is a long journey. This is, you know, two weeks from now, oh, here's our ordinance update, you know, congratulate ourselves and move on. There's a lot to this. And I would also note, just out of, as we move through this process, understanding that we have partners that, you know... they have their own constituency and boards and things that they have to work through as well as others. So, you know, we're blessed with really strong relationships internally with between our kind of organizations. And we'll look to leverage that. But by no means is this a overnight, you know, solve this overnight issue. This is a this is a long term vision and and things are going to evolve. And who knows, five years, what everyone's going to, five years from now, what everyone's going to be writing. So we'll see.
That's fine. But no, I think it's I think that's great and it's great to point that out. And I also want to say thank you for putting this together. I know when we talked about this, you said you weren't quite ready. It's just it has been so top of mind. It's been brought up here by commissioners. It's been brought up from our residents. And I just wanted the residents and commission to know all the good work that city staff is already doing on this. So just kind of bring this awareness that that good work has already been done. So thank you for everything you're already doing.
Thank you.
So next we have the consent agenda items. May I please have a motion in a second to approve tonight's consent agenda items?
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a work session. Where are you guys going? Work session's just starting. Come on. It's a public work session on public comment and how items get on the agenda. And that introduction again is by City Manager Charles.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So there's actually three topics that Commission identified a few months ago to have a work session on. One is is public comment on city commission agenda items, how agenda items are set. And then the last one was the requiring potentially requiring consultants to use city email addresses. I will defer to the Commission. Do you want me to kind of go through all three at once? Or do you want to start with public comment and shift and then I will?
Why don't we just go one by one?
Okay. So just a quick overview, the city does have an adaptive public participation in public comment policy. It's it was updated in September 18th, 2023. So it did have a recent update. We've had ones before where we set the time limits. We do ask those who are participating to adhere to certain behaviors. All these sort of rules and regs that go with this are constitutional. The courts have been very clear about the community's ability to set these kind of boundaries and rules. So but with that said, just a quick reminder, we have the public comment at the beginning of the Commission meeting, as well as allowing for public comment on agenda items. Our city clerk was reached out to various communities and provided you a summary. There's a printout of that for you of what everybody, well, I won't say everybody, so what some of our neighboring communities are doing. So staff is just seeking feedback, direction, answer any questions you have on.
So I have a quick question to start out with. So I wasn't at the meeting when this was voted to be added to the agenda proposed. So the public comment discussion, was that in terms of when to take public comment?
When, because it was while I was acting as mayor in your seat. So the question, this came on the heels of the six plus hour meeting. And I think rightfully frustration from the public because we got into the weeds on our discussion. And people have been sitting and waiting for a long time to comment, kept waiting or left. And I know that was frustrating for them. And so the way that I under I recall this happening was the next meeting, I said, okay, how can we, let's talk about when we do public comment and can we move it and what that policy is? So to my recollection, this was all about like, can we move public comment out of order in any way with with a regular agenda item? So that we can hear public comment on it earlier and not after our prolonged six hour discussions?
So is that something akin to what we have been doing? I think it was you and Commissioner Wesley that suggested further gaslight from that moment, that meeting going forward, we brought public comment to the top of the agenda item. So is that like kind of what the discussion was about, doing something like that or making a permanent change? I'm just curious.
I don't recall it being a permanent change, but I wasn't the one who made the motion. I I the way that I understood it was that this was like, let's have a policy about when and how we move public comment up out of our normal order of, you know, introduction, questions by commission.
Yeah, I raised the motion and I think it was in response to, you're exactly right. You know, some of the meetings that residents were having to wait a significant amount of time for. Our discussion before they were able to provide comment. And I just think I would think of some of the language around how to describe this this policy in terms of simply saying, you know, you know, we can recommend things that could appear on the agenda. We could also recommend, hey, this looks like a rather large agenda item. It might involve a lot of public comment. We either make the request to you, the mayor, or you make the request to us. But it might just, instead of trying to get too specific on which events, you know, if there's going to be more than 25 public commenters or if it's going to the discussion is going to be more than one hour. I could easily see it just being left, sort of like we've adapted to, right? We found a way to adapt to it and I think the residents have responded favorably, so.
Well, I think that the concern also was because we were moving things around a lot, just be considering, you know, kind of. I think we were taking kind of the agenda and trying to figure out how best do we handle? And we were, it seemed like we were test piling out, when do we put in public comment? And I think then that caused a bit of confusion. I think that's what maybe raised Mr. Hunter was like, hey, or Commissioner Hunter was like, hey, let's and along with myself, too, is like, hey, why don't we have some sort of solid, you know, solid way that we do it that's 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 consistent? So that everyone knows when public comment is going to happen? What are the rules of engagement? And it's crystal clear, I know that we also, and this is maybe just slightly outside of this topic, but talking about how do we how do we engage? How do we talk, knowing that we're a little bit handcuffed in the formalities of Robert's rules? And knowing that we there's a little bit of flexibility in that, too, that we've taken? And do we do we sharpen our sharpen our Robert's Rules skill set? More to like conform to those rules more? Or do we like the a little bit more with the relaxed? Trying to make it as relaxed as possible, knowing that Robert's Rules and that the formality is a bit rigid? You know, and we can't respond back to the to the commenter commenter, even the one that posed the question, what they're fully allowed to do, us not being able to engage. It's sometimes frustrating for them and for us, too. So but again, yeah, coming back down to this, it would be great, I think, to have something solid in stone to go, this is how we how public can engage, how they can leave public comment. And that we all know when it's going to happen. And that's what I for me personally, I think that'd be great. Just that way, it just kind of eliminates the guesswork out of it all.
Yeah, I think that's right. And I mean, there's there's definitely like challenges with it because I do see the benefits of, you know, why we have it structured the way we do, which is staff comes to us with a lot of information. And what if if we hold public comment too early? Or not too early, but before all of that is put out there? Like, maybe maybe there would be new questions that the public would have that they can hone based on the information that's shared or by like questions that we tease out, you know, during the presentation and our questions. So I don't think there's an easy answer. I think there could be benefit to saying, you know, having something in there that just says the mayor may move, you know, move public comment within an agenda item if it's anticipated that it's in the best interest. I'm trying to come up with a language, like in the best interest of the community to maximize engagement on a particular item when a discussion is expected to be long. Like, it's and I'm struggling with how to like put that in a policy when it does seem like we adapted well with the current policy.
It's like it's already allowed, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it seems like it's already allowed. And I, yeah, to Commissioner Wesley's point, like consistency is good because you want people to be able to know, when do I show up? And, you know, is it before or after without getting people too confused, I guess, I would think.
So like, should we have added to our policy something that's like, if if public comment will be taken in a different order, it will be posted with the agenda? Because I definitely wouldn't want to miss out on, you know, like, if people have if people have read our agendas and they're like, okay, there's going to be a presentation by guess investors and then and then and then questions and then staff input, they might come half an hour later if they have other things on their agenda.
So so my only concern about if the posting requirement is every so often, not often, but once, once in a while, we walk in and go, whoops. You know, there's a lot more people here than we anticipated. And so to limit yourselves, ideally, yes.
But that's a good point. It limits that flexibility then if we come in.
Commissioners could also then at that point in the item approval of the agenda, perhaps suggest that we change the order of public comment if we then come into a meeting and see that there's a, you know, far exceeding what we thought there was going to be number of people here for that for that agenda item? Could we change it at that point?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a good point because I'm wondering if it's less a policy change and more an acknowledgement of, hey, something happened and there was an insanely long meeting. None of us anticipated that, obviously, including the people here that waited so long to make public comment. We all are aware of that. And based on that, we adjusted. So maybe less a firm policy, more an acknowledgement that that flexibility does exist. And because since then, I've been careful to be consistent so that at those gaslight, you know, meetings, it was a consistent so people could kind of count on that. Because I do want people to be able to predict what's going to happen at a meeting. I like your suggestion, Commissioner Swartz, but yeah, I do see that could limit it, limit some flexibility.
And if it's if it's something, just from our perspective, if we're leading in and saying, okay, we know it's going to be a more intense meeting, for lack of a better way of saying it, that, you know, ideally, yeah, we give our residents or our participants as much lead time and say, okay, this is how we're going to do this. But my like my observation is the you don't want to lock yourself in, so with that, just some context with the Open Meetings Act, with a posted regular meeting, Commission has the ability and our policies speak to this. Is you can get into a meeting and, you know, adjust the agenda accordingly. It's only with special meetings that you you have to stick to those topics. So that you, you know, the law is built in, has built in that flexibility for any public entity or public board through the Open Meetings Acts and subsequent rulings and things of that nature, so.
So sorry, not to interrupt it. So if, for example, if we saw that our commentary, our discussion was going hours long, we could then take pause and say, hey, let's let's
Shift gear.
Shift gear, take public comment and then resume our discussion. That's possible and.
Yep, that that flexibility exists inherently with that. So with that said, if Commission is comfortable with this, what we'll do is kind of the direction of the Commission is you're seeking that flexibility and whatnot. It may be worth looking at a small tweak to our public participation policy. And we'll we'll take a kind of a swipe to codify this discussion if that's okay with the Commission.
Yeah, again, I think, thank you, Mayor. You know, I really think that I'm less of a policy person than I am trust and discretion. So do the does the public get to publicly comment on our conversation about public comment at this point in time?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. But I think if if the residents have responded favorably, like I can attest to, that's that's our goal, that should be our metric in in changing any procedural or or policy based measure or or simply reading into the current policy and just acting with discretion of what's here, four corners of the of the document. There is a lot of discretion written into this language and I think we've adapted to it successfully.
Have a couple of, before we move on to the next one, sorry, I don't want to interrupt though, first we'll talking about the like where we put it. I just have a couple of other question and a comment about the public participation policy. Okay, all right. So as I've gone through, you know, the policies that you've kind of put back in front of our faces, that sounded abrupt, I don't mean that, that you've put back in front of us rightfully. And some of the comments that we've received from from residents about public comment over the last few weeks, months, a couple of things that stood out to me in going back through the policy. So my understanding of, this is a suggestion of the Open Meetings Act, is that we cannot require residents to identify themselves by either their name or their address, right?
Right, we don't require that.
So I I think it might be helpful, and you know, some people have said that's been inconsistent and so forth. It might be helpful if if we kind of change that to just like, hey, we invite you to introduce yourself. Because I think by saying, please state your name and address for the record, it's the implication is that that's a requirement when it's not. And just might make a more welcoming atmosphere to start public comment when folks come up. That's a that's a suggestion. And then, under the rules of decorum in our public policy comment, it says that persons making public comment shall not engage in personal attacks. I know that we've had some some conversation recently up here. So I'm curious if we can, what constitutes a personal attack? And when does that get cut off?
I think what constitutes a personal attack is when somebody literally focuses on a particular person and makes comments directed at that person. And I think, you know, the last meeting had a couple of examples of that. You know, when the person started to talk maybe about Commissioner Hunter or to Commissioner Hunter, there were things you could say, but there was a point where that line got crossed. And, you know, it's another one of these things that is subjective. It's not a perfectly objective tool. But I thought the Commissioner's reaction to that person's comments were, now, wait a second, you're now bringing my family into this, things of that sort. That's clearly a personal attack. If he wanted to say, you know, I have concerns about, and and maybe the comments about Commissioner Swartz are easier to use for this illustration, I have concerns about who she's employed by and I would like the Commission to take a look at that issue. That's appropriate when you go on from that and say, and by the way, I'm convinced she has a conflict of interest and so on and so forth. That's that's personal and it's also nothing but his opinion. Without even, you know, after asking us to look into it, he's saying, but you don't need to because I've already decided it. And so it's not that questions of a certain sort are out of line. It's a question of when you stop stop that line. And there's certainly, you know, we had the same issue with Commissioner Skaggs earlier on where somebody said, well, I think there's been a there's a conflict of interest here because of some political contributions made by that family. You could say, I think I would like you to look into whether the possibility of some political contributions would disqualify this person from participating. But let us then do that and and not go the next step and convict the person with your own words before. I mean, you're answering your own question and not really asking us to do it. You're asking us to basically confirm what was said. But those are the kind of things, I mean, it's say, it the problem you're always going to have, and I know there's been some concern among all of you that, for instance, has the mayor jumped on it quickly enough? The one with you, Brad, I mean, I think you didn't necessarily, I don't think any of us saw necessarily what was coming and all of a sudden he says, oh, by the way, you know, it's like, well, at that point, he's already spit it out, you know? And some similar with you, Laura, I think that he was going along, you're sitting there thinking, well, he's getting close to the edge, but then all of a sudden, he doesn't put his toe in the water, he jumps in the deep end. put his toe in the water, he jumps in the deep end with it. And so it's always gonna be difficult to cut that off in a timely fashion, but certainly the effort has to be made to cut it off. But I think that, that role falls to the mayor, she has to decide, you know, is this a personal conflict, or I'm sorry, a personal attack? And if, if she thinks it is, I guess I would tell her to err on the side of caution on that one because usually what I would also notice, Commissioner, is in almost, with all three of those instances I've talked about, there was a tone of the presentation that was not classically good civil discourse, let's put it that way. I think that each of those people kind of went into attack mode rather than, than saying, I have issues that, that concern me and I would ask you to look at them. It was kind of like, I have something I wanna say and I'm gonna say it.
And with that, there's a, there is, there is a balancing act here of, you know, what are, what is a speaker's first, first amendment rights, constitutional rights and things of that nature. Is, I think we've noted to the commission that the environment, that the courts have always recognized you have some abilities to curb stuff versus they're standing out on the sidewalk and holding a sign saying that Shay Charles was sure sort of the ugliest thing in the world. They absolutely have that right to do that. So, you know, that is something that we can't limit. On the other hand, you know, what comes in here? And just an observation is that, if we talk through this and kind of, okay, reflect on the last few months and public interaction, as a rule of thumb, we do this like once every ten, fifteen, twenty years. And these, this is not a normal progression or normal kind of situation for us to deal with. It's, you know, we, this was a, okay, big intense development and whatnot. And we'll have some future conversations and whatnot. And what I have observed is the commission has refined how it's handling this and now, okay, now I, and, and some of this is just, you've got to, you've gotta live these experiences. You've gotta all of a sudden go, whoa, you know, we didn't expect that. And that's not a regular behavior for this organization. And so that's just some observations there, so. And there, and there's some things just, you know, as I reflect over the last few months of, okay, if I could go back and tweak the time machine and change a couple of things, you probably would have in regards to the process, so. But just an, just an observation, so.
Just another question, is there an ap, maybe an appetite or thoughts? We're in like, you know, as we're, technology gets better and better, if people can't be here and wanna leave public comment, has any other cities done this where they've like, they could submit like their two, three minute video? We can play it, almost like how we're, you know, we're doing absentee ballots. I just, I just don't know if, some people have mobility issues getting here physically. And I don't wanna open up a can of worms either, it's going, all of a sudden now we have like, you know.
Two worms.
A hundred, a hundred videos now to watch and, and go through, but I'm just trying to think, like, or there are exceptions saying, you know, if I can't be there, you know, have you done that before, I think, where they've also written in? And then also the other thought, thing that was bubbling in my head is to kind of keep things, get an idea of how many people might be speaking. What about pre, like a pre-signup list? And then we follow that, that lineup. So that way, when, I know some people always don't know, oh, should I go? Are you, you go, I go? If we had a, like a list and they already pre-signed up, we already kind of know who's, how many people, and then we can maybe pivot i- if needed. And then we can have that list up and just kind of go in uni, like in order. And then, of course, anybody's getting added to the list after, as they show up, they'll be added at the end. So those people who wanna be able to speak, they, they're on there and we know who's coming up. I don't know, just like, again, I'm just trying to find a way to, to streamline the process, but also have everyone be heard.
Right. We do that. I'm, I serve on the rapid board as well and we, people sign up for public comment in advance, so we know, you know, Mr. So-and-so is gonna speak and, but at the same time, we also allow people to also add to that. So there's not, if you're not on the list, you also still get to speak. But yeah, in general, there's, there's, we know who's gonna speak.
Yeah, like if there's a QR code, like we have the list and then they come in like, oh, I didn't know, but I'm coming to speak, just QR code and they add, they automatically add themselves to the list. And so now we just go, okay. And then, you know, once we, you know, when we get there, we just kind of pile through the list and, and we're good. I don't know. Again, maybe it's extra work that's not needed and we're, we're fine, the system's fine. I'm just, um, again, as we're talking about, I just threw stuff, whatever was in my head there.
That's interesting.
Maybe like a Secretary of State, take a ticket?
Yes. Make an appointment. Yeah. So, that's the counter. So do we want to?
So, so if the commission's okay with this, we'll, we'll take it, based on this feedback, we'll kind of go back and take a look and go, you know, and, hey, summarize it and then bring it back for a future kind of conversation and then, you know, identify other policy refinements and things of that nature, so that may be advantageous. So I, I think I have a better sense of where we're at. And again, balancing that, you know, it's always good to do the self, self-evaluation and, and again, this process with this project has just, again, it's been a lot of, lot of community input and we absolutely appreciate our residents' input. How do we continue to refine that and whatnot? And so, not sure what the answer is, but give us a chance to digest on this and, you know, are there technologies, you know, easily deployable too? Because if we're, we're not gonna do this once every two years or something like that, then everybody's going back and dusting off the magic machine so that you know how to sign up and I, so just wanna think, digest that a little bit, so.
Just to circle back on, on decorum of public commenters then, I, I do see it here is the enforcement and the, and, you know, point A is for, for warning of public commenters, it is the mayor's sole discretion. I don't want to, when trying to curtail decorum, end up in a decorum issue myself in interrupting somebody. So it is solely the mayor's responsibility to make sure those rules are not being breached, correct?
But it's also okay to have a reaction too, people are human and people in that moment, if you have a reaction or something, I think that that's not a disruption of decorum. I wouldn't think so, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I wanna avoid what happened last time. And although if it, if it's, you know, I'm just thinking of someone owning a business, right? And, and those things show up in somebody's personal income and their, their financial side of things, or somebody's spouse and their potential employment situation, right? I mean, these are things that can, can be damaging to, to one's lives. My reaction in the moment, writ large, a thousand different iterations of what could have happened in that situation to multiple different people and personalities, again, I'd be glad to defend myself in the same way, time and time again, but if there's more clarification on that process that we need in terms of, I'll stay quiet and allow for, for that lack of decorum to be addressed, I don't know if we finish that conversation necessarily, so.
And just a, just an observation again, is that as you become, as you spend more time on this board and have those experiences, you become, just by virtue of, okay, because in the five year, almost five years I've been here now, that, this is the first time during my tenure that we actually started to veer into this and had to go pull out the, the rules and whatnot. So now that everyone's had that experience, I think there's a heightened reaction. And, and part of it too, this is also just a, how commissioners would like to be, in, in part of this, excuse me, how the commissioners would like you, the mayor, to handle something like that.
Yes.
And that's a, to be honest, to try to role-play out every example and say, you know, and whatnot, we do want some, I would argue that you need some consistency, but part of, part of this is kind of experience this, you know, live fire, if you will, probably not the best terminology, but, you know, now you know, okay? And if you had, when you ran for commission two and a half years ago, if you said, oh, by the way, you're gonna have somebody have, and you're gonna go, wait, what? So, and trying to prepare for that's always tough.
Again, I'm, I'm more than happy to defend especially that sort of attack myself time and time and time again. It wasn't too hard to do. I was actually fairly glad that it came out so quickly. Naturally, although I don't want to step over what could be solidified as proper procedure of, of allowing the, the leader of this meeting to, to be able to do that in, in each of the occasions, the mayor sees fit. So more of a question than, than a comment, but if there's a gray area, then I'll hope that it doesn't happen again, but be, be, be prepared when it does.
You know, I do have to say that, like to Mr. Charles's point is, since I've been on the commission, this has not even been an issue until this recent, you know, and I feel like a lot of public comment meetings are getting more and more aggressive. So I'm, you know, it's every time, I do not sure what's gonna get thrown at you, but they're getting, commenters are getting more and more aggressive. I actually received a threatening letter that was sent to my home and now my family's, you know, the mail is kind of set aside and my children aren't allowed to touch the mail. So, you know, things are escalating, unfortunately. So, yeah, we try to bend and learn as quickly as we can and unfortunately, we're in this situation, so.
Sorry, dear.
I can tell you that I will do my best to anticipate it and stop it when I can.
And I think we should also give grace to each other and to the mayor for trying to react quickly to hard situations. You know, but there's that fine line, like we've said, of you don't wanna stop somebody from speaking their mind on things. You know, I, I went back and re-watched the video because I was kind of taken aback by Commissioner Hunter's interaction as well as my own, you know, the, the comments, not the interactions necessarily, the comments from the public and went back and watched. And I can't say I would have reacted any better or any quickly. These are, these are hard cases and, you know, I, I just think we, we should give grace and I'm, I don't, I'm only speaking for myself, I, I have no issue, you know, in turn hindsight, you might have shut down the comments sooner that was directed towards me. And also like, I don't, I, I don't care with having those issues brought forward. And I think that goes to Attorney Huff's point of like, we want the public to come up and say, hey, I think I see an issue, as long as it's in good faith. You know, come forward and say, hey, I think I see an issue, let's, let's drill down on this. Or reach out to me personally and say, I'm putting together a couple of pieces here, what's going on? But, you know, when that, when that turns into a personal attack as it was directed towards me and as it started to turn towards you, I, you know, re-watching it, I saw the mayor take a moment, evaluate quickly and react the best she could. So I, I just think we can all give each other grace in handling tough situations.
Thank you. Cause then, you know, I've mentioned to, and I've had this conversation with John and also with Shay, you know, like, look, these meetings are getting more and more aggressive. People are getting more accusatory and more aggressive. But I feel like every meeting, I'm adding more rules, you know, like, okay, and you also have to remember your neighbors and then we can't do this and we can't do that. And now, you know, there's this limit because we do want people to be able to feel freely. And I feel like, you know, adding to these rules, but I, one thing we have been doing lately is posting them, which wasn't done prior to what, like a couple of months ago. So now they're consistently posted so that people have access to those, because they didn't need to be posted before. But, yeah, I think, thank you for that because, you know, I do try to anticipate, but to Mr. Huff's point, you don't necessarily know what's gonna, they're gonna happen until it's out of, out of their mouths. And then it's like, you know, and then you try to react as quickly as you can. And like I said, this is, this is fairly new to this commission, so unfortunately. But it is something that is here and we, I need to do my best, so. Yeah. Good discussion, of course.
Change the subject a little bit, just, something I did wanna talk about, at least just to get the pulse of everyone's thought on this, is that we have a three-minute timer. I see consistently some people, and there are some, you know, that, that will go over that time. I'm, I'm a bit of a rule follower, so it's like, should we be considering increasing the time or how do we, do we bring like the, you know, Grammy music up as they're talking and then kind of slow? Cause we don't wanna be mean and go, hey, you know, okay, your time's up, like sit down. But I also, and I think some people, a lot, most people try to abide by that and they kind of go over just a bit, you know, but what about those who just will just not care, keep going? And I've seen them go like two, three, two, you know, two minutes, three minutes and beyond. And, and then I guess what I'm also trying to do is protect the rest of the residents that when they come up, okay, if someone burns past that and goes two more minutes, so they had five minutes on the floor, and someone else comes up, do they have justification to say, well, if they got five minutes, I can get five and what, what's to stop me from going six until someone shuts me down?
I think that's under 4A. I think it's decorum. I think not adhering to time is just like stepping out of the bounds of any other decorum-related issue, so.
I will say in defense of those who are making public comment regularly at every meeting, that I haven't seen that since we have the timer and people have gotten used to the timer. Because when people go over three, I set my stop watch on my phone because I'm like, at one minute, I'm gonna start to say, sir or madam, can you please wrap it up? Can you please, and I've only had to do that twice. So I am keeping track here as well as here because again, you don't wanna stifle, people do need to finish train of thought. I also wanna be, you know, but to your point, absolutely respectful for everybody else who wants to make public comment.
Yeah, it might be fair for everybody too.
But I have seen public comment go from being minutes over to, I feel like everybody's doing a pretty good job.
You're saying?
Yeah, that's what I would say, in my opinion. I think they learned a better job.
Well, and again, just to that, that the point again is, y'all have been experiencing something that you've not had to deal with during your time on the commission, so you're learning and getting better at, okay, you know, and things like, and that's, that's a natural evolution.
Yeah, okay. I still think that the music could be cool. And it would be like less mean, you know? Like after like one minute going over like.
Just turn up the music, right?
Oh, okay.
Or an air horn.
That might be more abrupt. Okay, were there any thoughts more on this or do you think we can move on to the next? What was the next?
So commission agenda setting, the question was posed. Again, city commission handbook speaks, speaks to this. I will say as a matter of practice that, and I think I've said this, every commissioner during your tenure with the commission is, if it's one that, and, and part of this is a little bit of a judgment call of, is there an appetite amongst the entire commission to add this type of thing to the agenda? And my, my practice and working with the mayor is, is take the call and say, you know, yeah, we're, yes, I can do that, just based on the feedback I'm getting from the commission as a whole. Or no, actually, I prefer you get commission direction or approval, if you will, or consensus is probably a better word, that yes, this is something that we wanna do. And, and part of it is not an intent to stifle discussion or debate or, you know, commissioners by any stretch of the imagination, but part of it too is, is just resources, city staff resources and whatnot. The conversation on this evening on the e-bikes and e-scooters was kind of a, you know, again, went ahead and moved forward with it, but you also, I think you would note that we weren't in a place, we being myself and the team, weren't in a place to do an in-depth, deep conversation on that, so. But with that, questions, comments?
Chris, Chris, go ahead.
I was just saying, like, just reiterating that, so you're saying it, it is the staff with, along with the mayor that com, that compiles the agenda as it's said in, in this? I mean, I'm, I think you're right in saying that the, especially in like the most, the big, the big ticket item that everyone's talking about, which is gaslight, you know, putting that aside, I think that the, everything's been working fairly properly. My four years here, I've never seen it going, you know, where there are things that are missing on the agenda that we should be addressing right away. And I think that we do a really good job at, you know, being, being able to pivot quickly, especially being a small city, to be able to react quickly. I think that we're doing a great job there, aside from the most acute, you know, gaslight thing that's been happening, which is again, something that's a bit, it's a bit different animal that we've been, been tackling. So I, I, I think it's fine, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I appreciate staff putting together this chart. It's interesting to see, you know, we just, this is the only city commission I've ever been on. So just to see how things are put together and to see where like, very much in line or even more in. very much in line or even more inclusive among commission and getting items on the agenda. You know, like Commissioner Wesley, having been sitting here almost four years and seeing how things, you know, come, come through, I, I do think it works. One thing that's not in the memo and I'm, this is not, there's no open meetings act violations happening with this, but discussing outside one-on-one with other commissioners, hey, I've got this idea. I read this article. I'd like us to have a discussion on this. Take a look, I'm gonna be bringing it up at a future meeting, just wanna bring you in. And, and I, you know, I, I've found that, that's what was some advice that was given to me as I was talking with, um, past commissioners and thinking about running for a commission, asking what the process looks like. To me, that makes sense because we don't wanna have a bunch of one-off people, you know, a bunch of one-off ideas where it comes up here and there isn't momentum for it. We have limited time, we meet twice a month, we have limited staff resources. So I've always, um, I, I think it works to have that, like, let's all come together. A little bit of like convincing each other that like this is a, this is a worthy agenda item before we spend time here and, and with staff.
Like consensus is what you're.
Yeah, um, and, and that, I think a good example of this, if I dare say it, was the, um, leaf blower conversation that we had. Because that was a commissioner who said, this is really important to me. And here's some research that I've seen on it. And I, I want to have this conversation. I'm not saying like, I want policy right now, but like I want to have this conversation. And he brought us all on board to have that conversation. Spoiler, it didn't go anywhere. But it was, to me, that was in some ways a success because, because we did, we did listen to each other, we did explore a new idea. It didn't pan out, but it worked.
Right.
So I, I like the way we do the agenda. I'm happy to see we're more inclusive of commissioner ideas and thoughts than some of these. No shade to them, but like, I like the way we do it. I think, I, I'm, I'm happy to see us in comparison and happy to see it in practice.
I think the leaf blower is a good example. And I think also another example is just tonight with the e-bike.
Right.
Agenda item, because that was something that was brought up here by multiple commissioners. And, um, you know, also myself and, you know, I've heard residents talking about it. And so I talked with Mr. Charles and said, where are we at? I know you guys are doing a good work. Can we talk about it? And, um, you know, they, he had some, he didn't wanna share necessarily everything, but with a little pressing just because it is so top of mind for so many people. It was put on the agenda. So I think that's just, that and the leaf blower are just two examples of how it works. So, yeah.
So I, I'll speak and say that I've felt a bit stymied by our process. And I, I would certainly advocate for a more clear way for commissioners to have input on two agenda items. You know, I, I like Wyoming's policy that says, hey, if two or more commissioners say you wanna have this on the agenda, it's gonna go on the agenda, like that's clear, we can communicate that to others. I've gotten the question a lot and I'm sure others of you have as well. Hey, how, how are these agendas made? And I don't, I don't have a great response. I've certainly talked with Mr. Charles and Mayor Favalli over the last couple of years that I've been on the commission about how, how that happens. And I, I think tonight's agenda item on the, on the e-bikes and e-scooters is actually kind of the culmination of, of a case study that I'll offer and how I've found that that to not work, that consensus approach to not work. Is that I went back and, and I looked at earlier, you know, kind of earlier incidents and earlier comments at meetings, um, going back to May of 2024, when we had residents come to us to talk about safe routes to school. And they said at that time, hey, we're not doing enough for road and sidewalk safety. Like, we want you to bring this up. Less than a month later, Kenneth Pezzanin was, was killed on Breton Road. July 1st of last year, an agenda item was, or work session was proposed. Didn't go anywhere. Almost a year ago to date, October 21st, 2024, um, I talked about it in my commissioner comments and verbally got the agreement from majority of commissioners up here that like, yes, let's do a work session on this. And then in March of this year, we had 15 people from multiple advocacy groups show up to make comment about this topic. And we're just seeing it on the agenda now. And I'm glad, I'm so glad it's on the agenda now, like, right? We all care very deeply about this topic. And I've been frustrated that we haven't been able to get it on the agenda up to this point. So I, I would advocate that I would say, let's get something on here that's more clear, that's more easy to communicate to residents, to resident groups, just amongst ourselves, to give us a target to say, hey, you know, this is something we, we're hearing for, from residents that it's important to them that we talk about. How do we make this happen?
I would, I would second that.
It's not a motion.
It's not a motion. I would, small s, second, second it. I support it.
And I think just a, just a common observation and I'm gonna go back to some of my earlier commentary. The last, well, especially this calendar year in particular has been disjointed in, in our, from the standpoint of having a major development coming through and whatnot. And one of the things that I, um, have done traditionally in my career is that, um, try to balance in a series of agenda items so that, and it might, and just my own professional experiences is commissioners get, boards get past about two hours and things start to go a little, um, go a little sideways. Tease Commissioner Skaggs about the state adopting budgets at 4:00 AM in the morning, but I digress. That, um, again, is that balancing. But again, at, at the end of the day, um, you know, the direction I, I get from the commission on how y'all would like to do this, we're, you know, we're as always adaptable.
Very much hear and, and understand and, and, um, you know, as you know, I've, I've worked kind of on your side of stuff when I worked for the state government and was, did a lot of, you know, what the state board of education said to do, oftentimes we, we had to do. I, I am very empathetic to that. And it, I, for some of these, and I, I remember quite clearly, I think the one last October, just saying like, and I think there should be a pathway that we can say, hey, we don't need you to do a lot of work right now. Like, there's something that we wanna share or there's some people that we wanna bring in to talk. This is especially having to do with work sessions, right? Where the lift for city staff can be less. And maybe, maybe that needs to be part of it as well. But, you know, our responsibility in representing our residents and our residents are coming to us and saying, hey, this is a really important issue. When are you gonna talk about it? I really feel that pressure and I wanna be able to say, hey, this is how we do it, you know?
I have a, a question, probably for staff. Because it was just brought up, the city of Wyoming, I'm, I'm trying to read this chart. The lines, there are no lines, so it's a little tricky. So it was just mentioned that a vote of two or more commissioners gets it on the agenda. But I, I think the line above it goes with it. It says, city manager, all items approved from work session and a vote or two of two or more commissioners. What, what does that mean?
So they, they have a separate process, um, that in some communities do this, particularly when we see larger communities that are dealing with a lot, a lot of issues on their agendas that, um, they will hold weekly work sessions on stuff. No action is taken, but consensus is built to move it into the full agenda, to the, uh, full, um, the full body. Both have their pros and cons, both have, um, um, opportunities, but they have a slightly different dynamic in regards to, um, just the way their commissions operate. You look at Granville, they don't do it. Trying to think of other communities.
I guess I'm just wondering like.
Actually, I could, I could, I was reading that, the policy earlier today. So from what I recall, um, I think it's, it's not, those don't go together. That I believe the city of Wyoming has a committee of the whole, which is, I believe, the, the process that you're talking about, Mr. Charles. But they do also say explicitly and separately, if two commissioners say they want an item on an agenda, it goes on an agenda.
So it's like a, there's a dual path?
There can be, I, I don't remember the committee of the whole specifically. I remember that being separate, but like in Kentwood, I do remember reading through that again earlier today. And their committee of the whole, yes, anything that we talk about, the committee of the whole, and we send to an agenda, we send to an agenda. But that is a standalone policy that the city of Wyoming has.
Again, again, each, each community has evolved at times and, um, you know, as always, um, if the commission wants to change the processes and whatnot, we'll obviously endeavor that.
So.
So is there appetite for like codifying something that's a bit more clear?
I guess I don't find it unclear. Like that's, like, I, I don't like, I don't think we're in disagreement. I just think like, to me, it, it is working. Like, we, we all agreed that we wanted to talk about this and so we, we, we did. We have, here we are. I, I, I know that you wanted to start this conversation a long time ago. And it, I think it's always been a worthy discussion. I also think things have been happening, you know, the staff is always working on things. We've had time constraints, resource constraints. So like, I don't, I don't know, I think we'll, we'll agree to disagree that that was like a, a failure of this policy in getting it on the agenda. I think that it's just, we have the resources that we have.
I guess to clarify, like, it's not just me personally that wants this item on the agenda, right? Like, I, I did talk to, like, I feel the pressure from residents who say, this is an important thing, right?
I think we, we all have.
And it, so it's not just personal frustration to say, we're here a year later. It is a year of working with residents to say, it's coming, it's coming, we're working on it. And I don't, like, there isn't a clear mechanism for this to happen.
I mean, if you, to, I guess, support Commissioner Groff Blazak, I guess, if you look at Congress or any other legislative body, I mean, the legislators are the ones who bring legislation to the body itself.
So were you making a motion then?
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out here is, is it a, I'm sorry, Brad, you can finish.
No, I, I think I was, um, you know, I, I think it's as simple as, you know, again, two votes, you could run the risk of having the issue completely railroaded when you get into the meeting. Because you didn't get buy-in from anybody but just two people and you come in front of an entire community and had worked no other angles to try to get any support for this. And the other four commissioners look at you and go, what were you thinking with this? I mean, there's, there's sort of a free market mechanism there to just say, bring it up at your own, at your own risk, right? In the, in the public square, if you really are passionate about it, go for it. But realize it could look rather ridiculous if, if, if it's a frivolous issue or you got no other support for it going in. So, I mean, I, I have felt at times confused by it and at other times I have felt handcuffed. I've never felt fully, uh, I guess, again, Manager Charles brings up, you know, you've been doing this for two years. Uh, I don't have anything largely to compare it to, but I, I guess my estimation of it prior to coming on board would have been that, you know, our residents on Hall Street wanted traffic, not just the traffic calming measures, but, but additional traffic measures. You know, it's not like I've brought it up in terms of trying to get it on the agenda as I think some of those things are being addressed. But that's just an example quickly of something I came to the board, to the commission with, possessing that, that thought and, and have, again, not felt necessarily that type of openness, freedom, flexibility to, to, to see it happen, but.
If, if I could, um, aside from adding to items to the agenda, I would also just encourage everybody to, um, you know, if you are hearing from groups or from individuals, you know, please introduce them to staff because what I find sometimes is that groups or individuals might think, they, they might not understand that the council manager form of government. And so they think you guys work, work these full-time jobs and you're alderman and you're something else or whatever. They, they don't really understand how the government works itself. So sometimes it's just introduction about, hey, I'm concerned about this on my street. Well, if, if we know about it at a staff level too, you know, a lot of times we can go meet with them. We can go over in, in good detail with them and actually spend that time with them to, sometimes we can address their concerns, sometimes we can't. And we'll tell them, no, this does have to run through the city commission, so you really need to do that. But there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that we can certainly help with. And so just as a reminder, you know, we're here to, to help with, with those concerns too.
And I wanna piggyback on that because that's kind of what I was gonna bring up. I think, I, at least the way I look at, uh, when, when a group of residents brings a, a concern to me is like, I am their advocate and I am there to, uh, reach out a lot of times to city staff and meet with them. And I look at the commission level and putting things in the agenda is kind of that final step. Like, we've met with city staff, we've made a plan for how we're gonna solve this and we've built consensus that way. And then it almost organically moves into the agenda when it's time to ratify that. So in a lot of cases, like for instance, I had one with a, a lot of residents, um, around the Manhattan park when I was, when, with, with local residents that were coming to me with concerns or with our, uh, safe routes to school plan. Um, and in a lot of those cases, um, kind of being the advocate and being the amplifier and, and getting them connected with city staff or working with city staff to kind of, um, define what the problem was and, and, and make a roadmap for like how we're gonna solve that. I would say 95% of the time, we get that done before we ever think about needing to do a work session on that. I'm actually, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with how we're currently doing the process because I look at this stage as the like, we're ratifying all the work that we've done in the background.
I hear that and I agree. I'm not suggesting that we need a policy that says, hey, two people, because everything needs to be litigated up here on, on the dais. But there are important issues that do benefit from being discussed in the public realm. And especially like we talked about earlier this evening, this particular issue is a very adaptive change. Like, there's not a plan to be made and then finalized here at the table. Like, we've gotta bring folks along and the earlier and the more, in the more robust manner in which we can do that, like, the better for, for our community. And it's, uh, I think, I think making a more clear policy can only benefit us in just being more clear about how this happens with the community, right? Because the community asks these questions. It's not just about safe streets and sidewalks, it's about other things. And oftentimes we know, right? That if the question is, well, why haven't you put, um, I don't know, like, the roundabout, I think that's a bad example. Why haven't you put, uh, drinking fountains at Collins Park on the agenda? It's like, oh, well, because we handle it this way. So we need you to talk to Mr. LaFave and like, we'll figure that out, right? That's a very different type of issue. The bigger issues, I, I think all of us up here, and I think our residents too, understand the difference between like these more technical issues that we work out at the staff level and then the more adaptive and policy-related issues that we need to talk about up here.
I understand that. And I guess, um, like, from my point of view, if some resident comes to me and they're like, how do I get an item on an agenda? I would walk them through that process and be like, step one is we're gonna like get you like, let me hear, let, let me meet with you. Let me find out what you need and like, and bring that to city staff that makes sense to. Another thing I'd probably do is connect that group with another commissioner and be like, hey, they're passionate about this too. Meet with them as well. And, and when they're like, well, how do we get this on the agenda? That would be my answer. I'm gonna like, I'm gonna, we're gonna work with city staff. I'm gonna connect you with other commissioners, I'm gonna connect you with the mayor. And we're gonna build, um, a consensus to bring this, find a solution. Or if we do think that, that the consensus of all of us needs a work group or city staff is telling us, hey, this is way too big. This isn't as easy as just, um, why don't we have the water fountains on it at John Collins Park right now? That we need a work group, that's kind of how a work group comes up. Or that's how something gets on the agenda, at least in my experience, is when city staff is the one telling us, hey, this is too big. This isn't, this isn't a small thing that we can just do between you, me and, uh, like a road that might need a, a, a traffic study for if they need speed bumps.
Right, and, and this is, this is a, a big issue, right? I mean, like, the example that I gave, like, we worked through that issue. And the consensus up here on the dais was, yes, we want to do this, like, and that was a year ago.
Which issue are you talking about?
I'm sorry?
Which one are you talking about right now?
About street and sidewalk safety.
Okay.
Like, right, so e-bikes, e-scooters.
There's been a lot of back and forth, excuse me. I think I, I'm hearing. There's been a lot of back and forth, excuse me. I think, I'm hearing, there's been a lot of back and forth. Are you making a motion to codify something?
I thought this was like, a work session where we're just having a conversation.
It is, but I feel like we've had, it's gone back and forth. I've heard your opinion. I don't know that we're necessarily trying to convince, just kind of having a conversation. And are you making a motion?
I'm not making a motion. I'm just finishing my response to Commissioner Burdick.
Okay. And then I think, I think we've heard from everyone, and we can probably move on to the next agenda item.
So it, I'll finish that thought, and then I'll, I think, circle back to that, is that saying, hey, like, for us to recognize and say, hey, like, the approach broke down here, isn't to say, hey, we did something wrong, or anybody did anything wrong. It's just to say, hey, like, I don't know, let's, let's, let's spit this up, and let's do better as we move forward. And I think that having a policy would be a very transparent way for us to communicate with the community about how this thing happens, as well as for us to have an understanding. That being said, I did ask the question earlier, is there consensus? It sounded like Commissioner Schwartz said no, it sounded like Commissioner Burdick said no, it sounded like Commissioner Hunter said yes. Commissioner Wesley?
What?
Are you a yes or a no?
[laughing]
Abby and Brad have said yes, and Brian and Laura have said no. Are you a yes or a no?
Sorry, bring me up, sorry, I was, I was, I was, I was trying to put my thought on this next thing.
Do you have appetite to change the current policy? Yes or no?
Appetite to change the current policy. I have ideas, but at this point in time, no. But I do have ideas to make it better, potentially. Again, like I said, my first statement, I don't, outside of the acute situation with, with Gaslight, I don't see, I really don't see anything, a broken system. And I think that, you know, the city's been really, you know, really quick to pivot, especially when, you know, Commissioner Burdick has brought up a good point, saying, you know, getting, getting some initial interest and buy-in from other commissioners, and especially if it's coming from like, some residents, you know, then bringing it up. I think that, well, in order for us to get things done, we are doing those side conversations, saying, hey, you know, hey, what do you think of this idea, Commissioner, you know, Commissioner Schwartz? Do you have an appetite for this? Yes, no, maybe so. Okay, what do you think about this? Then kind of reaching out to maybe to the city, saying, hey, is there appetite? Sometimes they'll come back saying, hey, this is already on, this is already on, on, on our minds, we're already thinking about this, you're going to see this in like, the, you know, the second meeting agenda? Oh, okay. Sometimes it might be new, and like, let me chew on it. Sometimes it's a big, it's a big, heavy lift. Can't get it on the agenda yet, but let me, let me do some work and see what the staff can do. So I think it's, there's a lot of moving parts. It's really hard just to say, hey, let's just do something and just push this thing on. I think what, right now, what, the way we have it, it is working, again, just outside, not including what's going on with, with Gaslight. If we start to see more of this Gaslight kind of big-ticket items that are coming up, I think then maybe we should start to think about how do we then reform to, to make it even more clear, just like how we would want be forced to reform and, and pivot on how we handle public comments and, and timers and all of those things. So knowing that the timer thing's working, I think that this is working too. So again, that's my long-winded answer of saying, I think it's working fine. But again, I'm not, I do have ideas of maybe how we could tweak it better if we start to see some more, more of these big-ticket items like we see with Gaslight.
[laughing] I'm not.
Is my time up?
I'm sorry.
No, so.
I know.
And I say that, I don't want to, I don't want to negate the fact that, like, you know, there are, you know, there's some other ideas of how we can make it even more clear. You know, could we, I love that we, this is a good, I love that we bring this conversation up and talk about it. I think it's important, you know, and then it does kind of clearly, it does explain pretty clearly how, how it works. So hopefully this gives us enough, you know, information to turn back to the residents going, how do you get something on the agenda? Well, like this, and really, it's the, the staff and the mayor that helps kind of decide. But they're, they've never, I've never felt, at least personally, I've never felt that this, when I make a phone call, if I need to get ahold of anybody in the city, specifically either the mayor or, or city manager, Charles, like, I can get a phone call back within the day, sometimes within like, a few minutes. So I don't feel like it's, it's something that's like, so hard to reach everybody in a small city. Does that make sense? I think, so I think, I think, I feel comfortable with the way we are.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I would agree too. I think that, you know, conversation is key, communication is key. And, you know, I think Commissioner Burdick brought up a great point when, you know, there's been coffees, and somebody brings something up, and we're like, yeah, actually, let's have a coffee, let's sit with, you know, the mayor, or let's sit with Commissioner Burdick, or let's sit with Commissioner Schwartz, and let's talk about this, and see. And like, to his point, 95% of it has been able to like, hey, Doug, what about this? We're thinking, you know, and it gets answered at that point already. But yeah, I'm comfortable with the way it is. I think, like, I think to Commissioner Schwartz's point, it's more inclusive than other communities. So I, at this point, don't see a reason to change it, but I'm always open to constructive ideas, or, you know, down the line. But at this point, I think, I think it's working, so. So what was the last?
The last one was, there was a, the topic was asked to, the potential of using, requiring consultants to use city emails. In my understanding of the conversation, or my recollection of the conversation, this was more focused at longer-term projects, things of that nature. We did have an opportunity to touch base with the other cities within the region. Can I also speak from my own professional experience? I've never seen that sort of requirement. No other city requires, has that sort of requirement. Some noted exceptions, though, is when engineering firm is probably the best one, is retained by a community, and that employee is embedded in the organization, acting as the city engineer. They will then have a city email address for city businesses, business, and things of that nature. My own professional experience, when I was in Howell, we had a transition with our community development director, where we retained a consultant to service community development director on a part-time basis. And when that individual was doing work for the city, she was using our city email address. But again, that, that, there's a different dynamic. And lastly, with, traditionally, we've had when employees embedded from SABO in the city, that employee will always have a city email address for city business, so to speak. So, so again, can I answer questions or talk about this some more?
Can you remind me, like, how we brought?
Wait, how did this?
How did this conversation come up, I guess? What was the situation that made?
I think Commissioner Hunter had, had referenced the desire to be able to FOIA our professionals' emails, outside of the, anything they send us, obviously subject to FOIA, that's a communication. But the conversation, Commissioner, if I've got this wrong, you know, please correct me, or if my memory's bad, which is the more likely answer, that.
You're doing great.
The intent was to kind of, okay, what are they talking about internally? And again, just from our experiences, I've, I've never had, I've never worked with an organization, municipal organization, has had that kind of requirement. So, but with that.
I have a question. Did we, or, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, no, go ahead. I was just going to ask Commissioner Hunter more of his thoughts.
Go ahead.
But, go.
I just was wondering if we had talked to our IT team about this, because this strikes me as something that opens us up to more risk. I'm not, I'm, unless I'm like, misunderstanding it, I don't see a lot of benefit to having this, this practice. But every time that there's an email address that's connected with our city system, that's another like, potential touch point for a bad actor to get into our system and compromise our data, from everything I understand from all the corporate training I have to do. So, I'm not an expert in this, but it was like, red flags. So I just didn't know if that was part of the conversation, or if it didn't even get to that.
It didn't get to that, you know, obviously, anytime you open up your systems more and more, then yes, you create more vulnerabilities. So, but with that said, there is a, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I think Attorney Huff could, could attest, this is absolutely common practice in the business world. And with the calls and impassioned pleas from resident taxpayers, citizens all over our country, and here in East Grand Rapids, this is where this originally came from, was a, was a concerned resident, we could go a long way to improving the, the trust in our local government by providing this level of transparency. I think we're fully encrypted, although there's, of course, always bad actors out there to ward off any attacks. Again, standard practice, as it is for SABO PR already for, for our city. I'm not sure if that was something they requested, or we provided. But especially when, when this many tax, potential tax dollars are changing hands in terms of, of dollars, with the potential for information being passed from law firm to developer to law firm, or however that has worked. Having a consultant on those emails, as we've seen from other carbon copy chains that we've then been made a part of, for, for there to be essentially a back-channel operating, and this coincidentally to being addressed one week after, or one meeting after concept plan approval, I'd like my fellow commissioners to join me in adding this to the next agenda, as a motion tonight, to run concurrently with the business world, and I'm guessing a lot of other municipalities around the country. I don't know if we've done a, a full poll on this to figure out where it exists and where it doesn't. But in human resources, whenever Meyer brings in an attorney, or anybody doing consumer data work, or marketing from the outside, that person immediately gets a Meyer email address. Standard practice. So again, the enthusiasm, I hope you can tell that I have around this issue, would I think go a long way to helping our residents put, put a lot more faith in the work we're doing as we get not only Gaslight investors across the ultimate finish line, but, but a lot of the other work that, that consultants will do for our, our city going forward.
I think I'm not following, I'm, I'm not following, like, how, well, what is the standard practice, practice in the business world that you're speaking of? And maybe there's a business world thing, but like, I have never experienced this in the legal industry.
Okay. I can speak to a job that a family member had, had before they retired at Hayworth as a human resources consultant, that whenever somebody was added to the payroll from outside of the organization, that wasn't going to become, had no plans to become a full-time employee, immediately upon their contract being approved by that company, they would be granted a, a hayworth.com email address, so that all those communications, I mean, you're, you're, you're transacting business on behalf of the organization, right?
Like a contract worker?
Yeah. So, so that person absolutely needs an email domain that would be.
So like, a, a contract employee, not a service provider?
Correct.
And I think that's like, what I'm trying to, and maybe we're just talking about two different things. Because to me, like, when we hire a law firm, they're a service provider.
Okay.
And it's, to me, that's very different than like, taking someone on as like, a 1099 contractor.
Right.
Because there are different reasons for doing that in my mind. And that would be like, you know, in my employment, we bring on a marketer, and, for credibility, that's where that email address comes from. I just think we're talking about different things.
Yeah. So how, how are people who help us right now paid? Are they, I don't want to single out any one person. Are they paid on a, on a contract basis? Or is it, I mean, what is their employment arrangement?
So, so generally, generally speaking, so different types of contracts. And so Veritas, who was contracted by the city to develop the plans for Manhattan Park and whatnot, I believe that, and Derek's not here, that was a fixed-fee type solution. They ran the project, communicated with staff, and then they went on their way. And so they were issued a 1099? No, they were issued a, nothing.
Just invoices.
Was it a business?
Yep. Yeah, that's right, because it was a business. My apologies. That, so, or in the case of other consultants, they're done on a time and material basis. We do quite a bit of work with Halverson Engineering, doing various designs and whatnot. They are not on our system. They communicate with us, obviously, via email and whatnot, but that's on a time and material basis, and they are a business, so.
And I think a lot of those would go based on specific orders, right? We need you to do this amount of work for, for this very, for, for, for something that requires a proposal, right? For an open-ended, long-range relationship that involves something like we've had over the past 18 months, the, the, the lack of transparency there, I think, needs to be addressed.
I think the, the question, and is, or I think the point is, is the person operating on behalf of the city with folks who are not a part of the city, right? So when Mr. Huff is interacting, say, with the developer's attorney, he's operating, you're operating on behalf of the city, you're conducting the city's business, and should be using the city of East Grand Rapids email address.
I've never seen that in a law firm.
Yeah, I mean, I, so I can't speak to attorneys, but certainly when I worked at the state, all of our contractors, when they were, were issued a State of Michigan email address, and when they were conducting business on behalf of the state, like, within the scope of work that they had been contracted for, they were utilizing that, that, that email address. And so I seem to remember that in the materials, which I cannot shuffle the life of me in front of me and find the right thing, right this moment, that there was a distinction, Mr. Charles, that you made between, like, those that, there was a distinction that said, those who are embedded in, I think it was your term, embedded in the work, or embedded in the city, like you mentioned SABO, they have an email address. I mean, I, I don't know the contract, or the contractor, the payment necessarily arrangements here, but I would say, and to just be very direct, I think that we're talking, Mr. Hunter, Mr. Hunter, Commissioner Hunter, Brad, sorry, that we're talking about our city attorney and Mr. LeBlanc, who kind of operates as our city planner, that there was a lot of communications that were moving around. Like, is that, to just cut to the chase?
Right. I think, I think what the resident and I had discussed was, what constitutes a non-full-time, not a full-time employee, but someone who has a over 30-day, but again, 30-day could be too short. Is it 60? Is it 90? This person is clearly going to be on staff without being fully hired for an extended period of time. That would not be in, you know, a hindrance to the IT work, to simply get an email address set up. I don't see really any downside to it, except a huge benefit to our community to say, we've taken great strides in helping to make this process much more transparent and available to our residents.
So, just a, just a point of clarification, that, and I'll speak to Mr. Huff, that he's not interacting with Gaslight investors. The point of contact with Gaslight investors is either myself, Mr. LaFave, or Mr. Giannotti. Mr. LeBuff is not interacting with Gaslight investors. The only time that Mr. Huff, or, and the only time Mr. Huff is communicating is when we're down to the process of, okay, we're exchanging legal documents, we're going over, you know, different things of that nature, that, that's when those communications, and that is done with, basically with my approval and at my direction as city manager. So, Mr. Huff, Mr. LeBlanc, I don't know why I called Paul LeBuff, I got my, that's what happens when you get this late, that, Mr., they are not authorized to, nor any of our consultants, authorized to talk directly to an applicant without either A, we're in the room with them, and it's a scheduled meeting with, you know, with that, whatever, or whatnot. They don't, they, they do not pick up the phone and call Gaslight investors and say, hey, I'm thinking about this, this, and this. That call comes through, always through staff, to applicants, and is regardless of the project on, on whatnot. Mr. LeBlanc is a little bit different animal, I don't want to say different animal, different situation that he brings a level of outside expertise of planning and zoning that we, we will leverage, and, and as we formulate our analysis, we rely on him. So he, but once this project is over, he'll go back to, and again, this So he, but once this project is over, he'll go back to, and again, this was all time and material, he doesn't do work unless directed by city staff of, we need you to work on this.
And if I could, I think just hearing some of the conversations and concerns, I think that from some of the other examples that were given from State of Michigan or from the private sector, if you were hired to do a task or a job, and that is what you're given authorization to do, that's one thing, but all the consultants that we work with are not, they're not filling a role of a staff member. They are, and they're not authorized to do anything without authorization from the correct staff member. So all of our professional service agreements know that, you know, who are the authorized contacts, and that everything has to run through a staff member, whether that's somebody that's authorized under me and my department. So just for clarification, I think we're on the same page. I mean, if I had somebody that was working as, like, let's say Jay was not employed by the city, and we contracted with a planning consulting firm for a zoning administrator, which some communities do, and that they're acting on behalf of our entity as that sole job function, I would agree with you that if we ever did that, that that makes sense because they're given responsibility, they're given authority. Nobody we work with has that authority. They have to go through any one of us for anything they do. And I would say that for professional service agreements for a lot of the firms that we work with, even our point of contact internally, they have to be included with who they assign it to, because they're not always doing all that work too. So, but the key is that they're always tied to us for any sort of direction or decision-making with, you know, and that being said, thus a city email, so it's foable.
Yeah, I mean, to, certainly a contractor at the State of Michigan is not replacing an employee. That would be a very fine legal distinction to make. But that aside, like, I think, Mr. Huff, don't you have a city email address? I feel like I've seen it.
No.
You always use your Varnum email address. So I was imagining that. However, I think that, you know, the, and I totally, yes, they are, all contracts, all contracted employees, all retained employees are operating under your direction, absolutely. That's how chain of, the chain of command works and how we would expect it to work. Though I do think that there is merit to exploring what is the, what is the trigger for potentially pursuing this, in that there is this area where even under your direction, they are conducting the business of the city. And that may not, that may not always include a carbon copy on an email or so forth. And I do think, you know, Mr. Hunter, sorry, it's almost 10 o'clock, that it's worth a discussion tonight, or at a meeting if that's what you want to do or propose, that we explore what is that threshold, so that it is, it is, and without any allegation of wrongdoing on the behalf of the city or anything, just that, again, kind of pushing for, let's pay attention to transparency wherever we can be transparent, and it's not going to impact the business of the city in a negative way, you know, let's build and maintain trust and do that, just cultivate that wherever we can, so.
And if I may, just, maybe, they're not, they're not doing the business of the city.
Right.
Are they not conducting business on behalf of the city?
No, they're doing tasks for the city as directed by the city.
I'm doing legal work for the city, that's all I'm doing. And I have a confidential relationship with the city as a client. I can't, I'm sure my firm would not allow me to break that confidence by saying anything that I send to the city is discoverable. In fact, quite the opposite, anything I send to the city is not discoverable.
Sure. Well, that would be protected, though, under privilege, right?
Right.
Regardless of what email address we're using.
Here's, here's...
I don't think they would let me use another email address.
Well, I think...
I think that would be a breach of my professional responsibility.
I appreciate the idea of transparency, and I like that, I like kind of where your head was going, but here's a couple of things, just understanding even more now, more clarity of how the city operates, and that there's these subcontractors, so to speak, subcontractors or services that they're, they're working, like everyone has been saying, that they're just doing what the city staff is telling them to do, their direct superior, who are they reporting to is a city staff member, they're not able to, I think that by issuing them out of transparency, again, I like kind of that idea, but then I'm thinking, I want to say just two things, one, I think it becomes dangerous, and it gets even more ambiguous then, if we give a city email to somebody who doesn't have the authority just to speak on behalf of the city without authorization. It's going to, it'll confuse the receiver of that email to go, oh, wait, are you, so you are the city, and you're telling me this thing? It's, right now, it's really clear, like, if they get, if there's communication, and what I'm understanding is that they get, someone gets an email from that service company, that they are speaking on behalf of the city, but they're being directed to do that business, not, they're not the city. I guess, the other thing I would like to say is that, as a small business owner, I, there's a huge difference, or I guess they're really nitpicky about who's an employee and who's a 1099 contractor. If I put somebody in a uniform, I give them a city, a company email, there are certain things that will trigger to go, whoa, 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 that's not a 1099 person anymore, that's now suddenly an employee, and then they're going to come after me with, you know, back taxes and stuff. So I have to be very careful, I thread a very thin line, and I think Charlotte's kind of shaking her head, is that, you know, to follow the law, it's like I can, I can hire a painter to paint my house, and I can tell him, hey, I want a blue, and I want these things, but I don't get to tell him, I mean, I can tell him, hey, here the window of time I'm available, but I can't tell him how to run his crew, I can't tell him to fire this guy, I can't tell him to, you know, I can't tell him specifically to show up, and you're going to wear this uniform, like, there's, otherwise then he becomes an employee of mine. So I guess I'm trying to make sure that we've, understanding why the city does it a certain way, I understand that, but I also kind of understand where you're going with transparency, which I'm an advocate for as well. So I don't know if there's a happy medium there, but I don't, I don't think the answer is giving everybody who works on behalf of the city that's an outside contractor an email address that is a city email address.
Yeah, I guess I still haven't heard the downside to it. I think it would, go ahead.
I was just about to say a downside.
Yep.
I think it's something that we need to consider carefully, is like, no one else requires this, and that makes me think, why? You know, it doesn't, doesn't mean it's not a good idea, because, like, you know, like Commissioner Wesley said, like, yes, more transparency, that seems good, but wait, why aren't other people doing it? And I think we've teased out a couple of reasons why that are, that are really strong, and tonight's conversation was helpful to me in part to understand exactly how, like, there are no emails that happen outside of foable emails where direction is given, where those decisions are made. And I want to be aware of that, and also, we want the best people, the best companies to work with the city. I want the smartest consultants who have the most experience. I want the good law firm who follows professional rules of ethics. And if we ask them to do things, like have an email address with us that's outside of industry standards, that's outside of the norm for any city, they're going to say, I want to work with those people, like, we've already established zero trust, like, out the gate, they don't trust us, out the gate, they're establishing rules that nobody else has. And, you know, not every industry is this way, but legal profession and others, there's an established standard of professional ethics that they have to follow. So, and that, you know, requires things like, you can't just one-off email another law firm or another entity and make decisions or statements on behalf of the city. We have to trust the people that we hire, we want the good people to hire, and if we don't trust them, you know, we fire that consultant, we find a different one if that trust isn't there. But I would prefer to follow the industry standard of not doing this, and trusting our consultants, or finding new ones if we find that that trust isn't there.
Okay, so, yeah, thank you, Commissioner Schwartz, Leslie, Burdick, Ralph Lezak. I think I would, I lost my chart, Manager Charles, regarding the other cities that, you know, that you surveyed to find out the agenda-setting protocol. And there it is, yeah. So, you know, we have a nice chart there, which kind of shows all the different municipalities and kind of their, their approach. There is some wording here that you did survey, is it six cities or Metro Six? I'm not familiar with that term, but I guess I'm just looking at this as a win-win for everybody. I'm not sure somebody would turn down work from a reputable city if they knew they had to abide by something that would make their business and the people they're consulting with more safe. This is, again, from resident concern that I take this, and I appreciate you bringing this to the conversation this evening. I guess I would like to make a motion that would read something to the effect of, for any non-full-time employee working for the City of East Grand Rapids for longer than a period of 60 days, or at hiring, expected to work for a time period of longer than 60 days, that the city provide a, is it eastgrmi.gov email domain? That's probably the longest motion on the history of the city commission, but if someone could clean that up for me, I'd appreciate it. But that's the intent here, is, again, not to demean any of the consultants or the applicant's team that they have working for them, but just to provide, after a few months of rather, you know, at times acrimonious conversation here in the chamber, something for the residents to take home and say, hey, we have something that would put us back on a better footing, I think, in terms of some of the concerns that residents have brought to commissioners at this time.
So we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I wonder if...
There's a motion on the table. Do we have a second for this motion?
Maybe she could reread it.
I cannot reread that whole thing, because I'm going to have to go back and watch it.
Okay, well, I'll second it so we can have discussion on it. Second.
So we have a motion and a second.
I am not exactly sure what the motion was, but for the reason...
Can you just paraphrase, Commissioner Hunter? I think you're...
For any non-full-time city employee who is or is expecting to work for longer than a 60-day period of time, to be given a city email address.
Sorry, Mr. Hunter, Commissioner Hunter, you're talking about a city employee, that's what you just said.
A non-city, non-full-time city employee...
But they're not a city employee.
Acting as consultant.
So you're talking about a non-full-time service provider?
Service provider, consultant.
That's what I'm trying to just...
Well, there's service providers, there's consultants, I'm not sure, like, that that's...
That's not a huge distinction.
Sure, I'm just trying to, like, they're not employees.
I think it is a huge distinction if they're not employees.
Not employee.
Not employee.
I think that's good.
It's a very, yeah, non-employee period.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Okay, wait, can we, so this is for a non-full-time, not city employee?
Correct.
Correct. Anticipated to work more than 60 days.
Yeah.
Anticipated to work more than 60 days.
Would that encompass lifeguards?
They're already employees.
They're employees, so they have...
They have emails, but they don't use them. Yes, they have to legally re-employ for that purpose.
Okay.
Can I see that link?
Okay. So that's the motion, right? And there's a second, and then we can go to a discussion, and we have any discussion, any thoughts on this end?
I have a little. I just want to speak to people that'll watch this later and are, one, fine citizen that's stuck along this long. I want you guys to know, from my seat sitting here, if I don't trust the consultants, and if I don't trust our city employees, I don't need to FOIA them, I will be pushing for them to be removed from their position, because we cannot operate if we do not trust those people. I don't need an email address for them, for me to believe them, I don't need to, I need to, I'm not going to work with people, and I'm not going to put my stamp on people that work for the city that I don't trust, regardless of if they have any email that we can FOIA or not. If I didn't trust John Huff, and I, to the point where I needed him to have an email for it, I would be asking for his removal. Same with any other consultant we have. That's where I'm at.
Here, here, you said it awesome, and that's exactly how I feel, and he said it first, which upsets me slightly, because I wanted, but that's exactly, I think that's exactly right, there's a level of trust, and if we didn't feel that, then we would take action immediately.
Okay. So Schwartz, did you want to weigh in?
I think I said a lot.
Okay, perfect.
So I'm going back to the language in here, Mr. Charles, about the outreach that was done to the Metro Six cities. And, well, first, I'll put it in that, I'll say absolutely trust is essential to the operation of functional organization. Very much agree with that sentiment. And I think when we work in the public sector, sometimes there are additional steps that we need to take to build and maintain community and trust and things like that. So I think it's that, it's a both-and situation. How was, so I'm going, again, I'm going back to this language to say, it's a matter of practice, they responded that no other communities have this standing policy. Which standing policy did they not have?
That outside consultants, outside of limited, limited exemptions I have noted, are not required to utilize a city email address for all their, for all their work. Basically, was the question posed to them. And, I don't have the email in front of me at the moment, but the email asked the, what's referred to as the Metro Six, which is the six cities in the Grand Rapids area, I asked also Kent County, I also asked Grand Valley Metro Council, because they do extensive work with consultants on various projects, and none indicated that they're, they require kind of what's being discussed here. Exceptions being, and those exceptions actually came from, I spoke with an engineering firm that I've worked with over the years, who does work all across the state, and said, do you run into this situation? And the noted exception that they provided was when their employees embedded in the organization fulfilling a specific city job, such as city engineer, and sending out any emails, empowered to send emails to residents saying, as city engineer, you need to do X, Y, and Z. Those type of communications do not happen from our professional consultants, outside professional, well, excuse me, our professional consultants do not happen that way. We do not authorize, whether it be Progressive AE, whether it be Mr. LeBlanc, whether it be Mr. Huff, Mr. Huff is a little bit different animal, because he serves as city attorney, but no employee, or excuse me, no outside consulting firm that we work with or provider would ever email our residents directly representing this, say, as cities, you know, I'm on speaking on behalf of the city, so you need to do X, Y, and Z. So...
Yeah, I do hear that. I'm just wondering, it's the sentence that says about the embedded part, because Mr. Huff does seem very embedded, like, he is, he does act as a city attorney. I think it might be worthwhile that, to table or withdraw the motion, and, like, you said that you weren't sure if your firm would allow you to have an email to, like, check on that, see if others working in a similar, like, ask that specific question. This is something that I would like to know, I think, more specific.
I guess my only final thought would be, is, you know, gosh, forbid that, you know, we lost our finance director, and we would have to go looking for somebody, no, don't go anywhere, Charlotte, you're not going anywhere. But if we had to hire somebody for 60 days before we found the irreplaceable replacement, you know, what would, what would that look like, right?
They'd be employed. We did, we actually did do that before Charlotte, and we went to the city commission with a kind of contractual agreement about who could say what and do what.
about who could say what and do what, et cetera, kind of as I described to you, with the bookends of what they're going to do and where the communications are and how that all works.
She maintained her email address from the company she was working for.
But, but again, in that case, that person wasn't empowered to be, she was that individual and.
They were doing tasks that we didn't have, we had gaps on outside of that, and then, yeah, so.
So getting gaps in tasks such as, you know, balancing, basically balancing the general ledger work, et cetera, that person was doing that, but that person wasn't empowered, as Ms. Seeth is, to talk to a resident and say, as finance director, you need to do X, Y, and Z. Those kind of communications ultimately came through city staff. Now, did, did, and Mr. LaFave can speak to this better than I can, obviously, but having had similar situations where you've lost a finance director and whatnot, it is very common, I won't say very common, it is not unusual to see that community reach out to an accounting firm to say, we need you to fill into this role, blah, 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 but they're not doing, acting as the finance director. Or if it is taken to that next step, that, no, they are going to do that, then yeah, absolutely, at that point, we would say, okay, you are acting as our finance director, you are empowered to make these decisions and have this communication with our residents, so you need to be on the city email. That's a very different dynamic versus what we have, say, with our auditing firm, when they come in, do the audit, et cetera, they're not interacting with the residents. They're not interacting with the commission with, on day-to-day stuff. That is something that city staff manages. The auditors do come before the commission, provide the update, report of the audit, what their findings were, but they are not using, utilizing city emails. Now, are they communicating with Ms. Seeth and their staff, but yes, they're contracted for that work specifically.
Okay. Just going back to Commissioner Schwartz's concern about safety, I think it's more safe if those emails are being transpired between our city's email domain, in that case, with personal financial information. But it sounds like I don't have a second.
Oh, you have a second.
You did have a second.
I think, from my perspective, I guess, I think it's, it bears additional conversation and figuring out what the right policy might be. I'm not sure that this motion is the right policy because I think we need more information, is all.
So we have a motion and a second on the table. I believe everybody's weighed in. I think it's time to go to a vote. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed?
No.
Right.
If I could make one other point, we're on the subject. Your contract is not with me. Your contract is with the law firm. And other people represent you in that capacity.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so that covered everything on the work session. Is that correct?
Correct.
So now we are going to go into an executive session. Are you going to, come on? No, uh-uh, you're not. Have a good night. Thank you. So, and we are not coming back, or are we?
Correct.
We are not coming back.
We are not coming back.
Okay, so the executive session is an executive session scheduled to take place following the work session to discuss attorney-client communication and to conduct a personnel evaluation for the city manager in accordance with Section 8A of the Open Meetings Act. And we need to vote to go into executive session. May I have a motion and second to go into executive session? Hello, motion and second, please.
So moved.
Thank you. We need to do a roll call, right?
Yes. Ryan, were you the second?
I was.
Commissioner Burdick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ralph Lazak.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter.
Yes.
John, Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Wesley.
Yes.
Mayor Favalli.
Yes.
Will you stay here?
We're moving or we're staying?
Just Charlotte.